No, no, no. Meeting call to order. March fourteenth, Thursday, Eba Beach Neighborhood Board. Time is seven oh one. Reading of rules of speaking, Vice Chair.
Aloha, this is your community public forum, your input and cooperation I really appreciate it. The Eba Neighborhood Board is an advisory board and we provide fairness, integrity, and collaboration to all to increase and assure effective citizen participation in the decisions of government. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to raise their hand and when recognized by the chair to address comments to the chair. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to one minute, one turn per person. Those giving reports are urged to keep their reports less than three minutes and presentations under ten minutes. And while we're at it, if everyone would take a moment to ensure that all of your electronic devices are silenced, put them on stun or silent. Video teleconference, the board will make a good faith effort to provide the public with the opportunity to observe the meeting as it happens and an opportunity to provide oral testimony without a physical presence in the physical meeting room. Please ensure that your computer or phone is muted for those you that are online unless you are speaking. Note, the board may take action on any agenda item. As required by the state sunshine law, specific issues not noted on this agenda cannot be voted on unless added to the agenda. A two-thirds vote, which is eight members of this eleven-member board is needed to add an item to the agenda. Items may not be added if they have major importance and will affect a significant number of people. A small addition to the rules of speaking, we understand that we are entering election season. We would ask that potential candidates not make any statements regarding their intentions to become candidates. I believe we will make a good faith effort to establish a candidate forum in the near future.
Okay, thank you. Introduction of my board members to my right, from my right, and then we'll go online.
Aloha, my name is John Clark and I currently serve as the vice chair.
Trey Gordner, treasurer.
Aloha, Alexander Gels.
Aloha, Liam Chin.
Aloha, Corey Rosenly.
Nobody online, thank you, Chair Mitra Nanis. Moving on. Public safety, first responders, Honolulu Fire Department.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Christian Chonfat, I'm a firefighter with the Eba Beach Fire Station. So these are the incident statistics for the month of February twenty twenty-four. As far as fires go, we had zero structure fires, two wildland fires, two nuisance fires, which include rubbish fires outside a structure or vehicle, one cooking fire, and nine activated alarms that had no fire involved. As far as emergencies go, we had one hundred and sixty medical calls, one motor vehicle collision with a pedestrian, seven motor vehicle crashes, zero mountain rescues, zero ocean rescues, and zero hazardous material incidents. And then this month's fire safety tip involves smoke alarms, so the smoke alarm safety tips. Smoke alarms save lives and are an important part of a home fire escape plan. Properly installed and maintained smoke alarms give occupants early warning to get outside quickly. Install smoke alarms inside each bedroom and outside the sleeping areas and on every level of the home, including the basement. Keep smoke alarms away from the kitchen or bathrooms to reduce false alarms. Test all smoke alarms once a month, press the test button to ensure the alarm is working. If the smoke alarm requires a nine-volt battery, replace the battery each year. Replace smoke alarm unit every ten years or sooner if they do not respond properly. Any questions?
Thank you, any question from the board? Corey, go ahead.
Um, thank you, I just want to follow up, uh, thank you for giving us this, uh, two meetings ago about the personal wildlife fire, fire action guide. I have a question about something on page six, one of the questions we were looking into is to the degree whether there is regulation where it comes to how far there must be protection from homes. And it says over here, Zone One extends thirty feet out from building structures decks and Zone Two extends thirty to a hundred feet out from buildings. And I'm just curious if this is in regulation at all or something that you can look into to follow up with me on whether or not this is just a recommendation or there's actually regulation on this.
So I do not have the answer on hand, but I can take it back to our superiors and get the answer for you next one. Thank you. Any other further questions?
Any question from the, from the community? Seeing none, thank you very much, you guys stay safe out there, thank you for all what you do for our community. Okay, moving on to Honolulu Police Department.
HPD Board, members of the community, first of all, um, I'd like to congratulate the chairman on his, uh, new babies, his twin boys, Malka and Makai, congratulations. He's now the new modern day Brady Bunch with three boys and three girls. Uh, I do have your crime stats for, uh, from February. February, we had twenty-four motor vehicle thefts, nine in our area, twenty-three burglaries, five in our area, a hundred and fifty-seven thefts, twenty-four in our area, forty-nine unauthorized entries into a motor vehicle, five in our area. There's a total of three hundred and forty citations issued, total number of calls, six thousand two hundred and forty-four, uh, one thousand five hundred and eighty-five in our area. Uh, the only thing I did want to bring up, some of you may have heard on the news about the tractor that was stolen and then used to break the ATM and steal the ATM in Kapale. Uh, one thing we want the community to understand is that it is illegal to operate a hop-to or a tractor like that on the roadway. So a lot of times if you see somebody driving one of these on the roadway, especially at two, three o'clock in the morning, please call nine-one-one because it is suspicious, um, they shouldn't be on the roadway, most construction companies are not working or moving stuff at that time. Um, any other suspicious activities, again, if it's suspicious, call nine-one-one, report it, we'd rather check it out and find out that it is nothing. Um, or maybe just somebody making a dumb decision versus somebody that's actually on their way to commit a crime. Uh, that goes for our shopping centers as well as, um, our roadways. Um, and that's all I got, I'm open to any comments, questions, or concerns.
Any questions for HPD? Go ahead, Corey.
Thank you for coming, I do have a question about the Police Training Academy and Waipahu. Um, is there any, uh, policies dealing with when they can be training? I mean, I've been hearing the sirens going off, and I guess the police are practicing driving over there and it can go on for hours at all times of the day. And I just wonder if there's any regulations about when that can be used or not.
Um, as far as I know, there's not, I can go find out, but, um, again, uh, the training is imperative. Um, it is important that these officers that are in training understand, um, the multitasking, which driving, trying to hear the radio, working the siren, working the lights, driving safely and stuff like that, so it is, it is one of those things that goes on, I, I, I do believe that it doesn't happen regularly at night, um, overnight, except for when they're doing their train, uh, the final exams and the scenarios and stuff like that, so they do have some night training, but it's not, it's normally like a week, well, probably about two weeks. I'm sorry, three weeks normally with the rotation for each class, so during that time period, so.
Yeah, so if you could just follow up with me about, even to anticipate what it would be like, it'd be great.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Anyone from the community? Seeing none, thank you, moving on to Weed and Seed.
Thank you, again, same person. As far as Weed and Seed, we did have our Celebrate Safers Community Fair at Pearl Ridge this past weekend, was a very big success. It was put on by the Attorney General, U.S. Attorney, and her office, and supported by Weed and Seed. Uh, we are in the middle of our youth mentoring program with the kids from the Holly Pono Boys and Girls Club during the bowling, uh, operation and training and teaching and mentoring with them there. We are working on a couple of other things coming up, we're trying to work with the school, with Campbell High School for our golf program with some of the kids as well, so. Uh, I think that's all I got.
Thank you. Any question from the board? Any question from the community? Seeing none, thank you Officer Piggin, thank you for all what you do in our community, stay safe. Okay, moving on, Board Administration and Planning, approval of regular board meeting minutes for Thursday, February eighth, twenty twenty-four. Okay, seeing no corrections, um, meeting minutes will be filed. Moving on to item B, lead testing at PTR, PRTF, John Clark.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, board members, uh, after some discussion with the, uh, neighbor, uh, commission office, there's some discussion regarding, uh, establishing a permitted interaction group, uh, for communicating with Marine Corps Base over the, um, range facility. Uh, as you may well be aware, members can interact with anyone that they want, two members can talk, up to two members can talk at any time about board member business. But once you start getting three or more board members involved, that's when sunshine law gets involved. Uh, so I know there's been some, uh, communication that's been presented to the Marine Corps Base on behalf of the Neighborhood Board, that is not a permitted interaction. So I would like to put on the table that we formally establish a permitted interaction group, PIG is the acronym, uh, so that we can formally communicate with the Marine Corps Base on a more formal action. Opening it up for a discussion, Chair.
Discussion, board members? Anyone? Okay, oh, Trey, go ahead.
Yes, I'd be happy to speak, um, Mr. Chair, I have a resolution that I've drafted in front of me to, uh, to do just that. Um, I understand that, um, following the sunshine law, we are, um, not permitted to vote on that, uh, this evening. Um, but I'd be happy to, uh, share that with the chair and do whatever is possible under the sunshine law to share that information with the board this evening.
Okay, so the resolution, we can talk about it, um, it can be put on the agenda for next month, but, um, we don't have, we can't add it, we need, I think, eight, nine? Eight, we have seven board members right now, if we get one more, then we can vote and put it on the agenda and, you know, and talk about it. But you got on residence community concerns, Trey, you can go up there and you can talk about it and then bring it back and we can go and vote on it or whatever on next month's meeting, okay? Thank you. Anything else?
I would just like to, um, just kind of read from the Neighborhood Board Task Force Report what a permitted interaction group is. Uh, a permitted interaction group consisting of up to one less than quorum, for this board, it would be seven members, up to seven members, can be established by the board to investigate a specific issue. The interpretation means that more than two neighborhood board, neighborhood members cannot participate in any meeting or attend other public meetings which consider topics likely to come before the board, including public forums or other public community meetings. So what that just basically means in layman's terms is that any member of this board can attend any other meetings that they want to. But once you start getting above two members, uh, then it's really outside the bounds of the sunshine law unless it has been specifically directed by this board that a interaction group has been formed. So when the beginning discussions of forming an interaction group to more formally communicate with the range. Did I capture that, Trey? Okay. Pal, Chair.
All right. Moving on.
I, I have a, I have a question.
Alex, go ahead.
Thanks, John Clark, um, I'm wondering, is this, uh, the same group that is trying to, is this a part of the same group that's being attempted to be established through the resolution by, uh, Representative Martinez?
Uh, no. This is a, uh, PIG that's specifically comprised of members of the Neighborhood Board, number twenty-three, Eba.
So I'm just curious because I know, and I just wanted to bring this up for the sake of conversation. I know that there was a resolution presented to, uh, in, in the House to create, um, to create a, a working group on this issue as well, where they specifically asked for the vice chair of the Eba Neighborhood Board to be a member. I was wondering if you have comments on that.
I do not have any comments.
All right, I guess we'll just have to, uh, see, I'm concerned about this resolution and them specifically calling you out, cherry picking you to be on this, this working group. And so I, I think that that's something that needs to be addressed here at some point if this resolution gets passed.
Okay, I would like to point out, um, that I, uh, I have been on this board for, I think I'm entering my tenth year now. Uh, and the communication, I think that we've established with the Marine Corps has actually become more robust over that timeframe. Without being self-aggrandizing, I'd like to point out that I've sort of been an even-keeled voice for the board. Uh, I don't attack members of the board, I present the facts as they are. So I'm, I'm not sure what led to specifically the vice chair being requested. Um, but this on the agenda tonight was to talk about the permitted interaction group, not that particular item.
Okay, that's good, I mean, I do, I just want to comment about the even-keeled and I, I feel that I've been very even-keeled as well and just ensuring that the, uh, the best interests of my community are represented in all these groups, right? I am not a former military, I don't have any conflicts of interest of that, if that could be a potential issue, I think that we need to be, be considering as well.
Trey? Trey, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, uh, if I understood, I heard right, uh, that there's concern that, uh, there have been interactions with, uh, the Marine Corps in which it was posited that that interaction was on behalf of the board, um, versus as a board member or board members. Can you clarify that statement?
Is that directed towards me?
Yes, you made the statement.
Uh, yes, perhaps there was communication that probably should have been under the umbrella of a permitted interaction group.
I'm, I'm sorry, I just need to, that wasn't my que, my question was, you said that there have been interactions with Marine Corps Base Hawaii by members of this board that have been posited as representing the board at large versus as a board member. That's what you said in the beginning, so I want to clarify, uh, if you could expand upon that.
Uh, I don't need to expand upon that, I made my statement, thank you.
Okay, well, that's just conjecture, so, I mean, without any evidence of that, I would think that we're, we're going down a, a pathway here that I'm not really following, to be quite honest with you, I understand the, the rules, what they are, which is any beyond two members, then, uh, sunshine laws kick in, that makes sense. I understand that individual members can interact with anybody they want to in their capacity as board members. Um, and that's basically from my understanding what have taken place in my interactions with Marine Corps Base Hawaii, I always say, I always say as a member, I always say Liam Chin, member of the Neighborhood Board. I never say on behalf of the Neighborhood Board, so I'm just speaking for myself since, since this has come up, I'm sorry, uh, other chatter going on here while I'm talking. Should I wait for you? So I'm clarifying because that, I think that's a, that's a statement that was slid in there that needs to be addressed, that just can't go out there and hang, that to my knowledge, there has been, at least in my, I've interacted, as the public knows significantly, with Marine Corps Base Hawaii on a regular basis, and I've always said so, uh, that I am Liam Chin, member of the Eba Neighborhood Board. I've never said on behalf of the Neighborhood Board, happy to share any email interaction with them. Yep, so I think that's important to clarify, and that's just speaking for myself, uh, and I just want, before we go down and start creating rules and talking about things for problems that may not exist, that we first clarify that.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm, Trey, go ahead.
I was just going to say, Mr. Chair, um, I think this is an important discussion to have, but recognizing that we're in Board Administration and Planning, there's been a proposal to have a, a permitted interaction group. Uh, this would be better suited to, um, community concerns, so I'd ask that we proceed to the presentations.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to presentations, Marine Corps Base Hawaii.
All right, uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, uh, members of board, thank you for having me here. Uh, I'm, I, my name is Chief Warmer Officer Three, Christopher Simms, I'm currently the officer in charge of the PRTF, um, which is the Pula Range Training Facility down here in, in Eba Beach. I am what the Marine Corps calls an infantry weapons officer, so there's about a hundred of, of us in the Marine Corps. We are the subject matter experts in the Marine Corps on, on all weapon systems, uh, tactics, and specifically range safety and, uh, what we'll get into here, uh, that includes surface danger zones. So when, whenever an infantry weapon, weapons officer goes through the infantry weapons officer school, we do, uh, up to three, well, two weeks of formal training and then, uh, we go into, uh, utilizing that on the ground, all of building these kinds of, uh, training exercises and building the surface danger zones ourselves. So we just both hand draw them and then we, we use our programs to make them. All right, so with that being said, uh, what I'd like to get into, if you could go to the next slide, please, is what Pualoa is. So Pualoa is, is not Schofield Barracks, it is not the Pualakalua Training Area, it is not Marine Corps Base Hawaii. It is a, uh, it is a, a place where there's two rifle ranges and three small, smaller, small arms ranges, uh, where only static fire happens. There is no fire and maneuver that happens on Pualoa. We also, what, so what we do is we, we have annual rifle qualification and annual pistol qualification, that's really our main, our main business down there. Uh, in addition to that, we also have, uh, local, state, and federal law enforcement that are there almost every single day. Annual, and like I said before, annual marksmanship qualification is not fire and maneuver. Um, it does not, it is not the same type of training that happens on Marine Corps Base Hawaii, Schofield Barracks, or, uh, Pualakalua. Uh, that being said, uh, what we have in common is our basic range safety structure, so up here, I, I have on, I'm not going to read off this slide, but what we have on a basic, uh, military range, both the Army and the Marine Corps share this, is we have what's called a range officer in charge and a range safety officer. For every single one of our ranges, we have that. What we also have are called assistant range safety officers, that is one assistant range safety officer for every four personnel training. Um, that is every range. When you come to Pualoa, you see a range safety structure that is far more robust. In addition to the basic, the minimums that we have throughout the Army and the Marine Corps, what we also have are what's called a block staff NCO or a block NCO. That is a trained in both combat marksmanship coaching and combat, combat marksmanship training, that is a trained individual who is a sergeant or higher and it's part of my staff, so on my staff, I've got roughly forty Marines. For each one of the ranges, I do have, when it's, when it's being conducted, I have what's called a block NCO, or, I'm sorry, a line NCO. Underneath that line NCO, I have block NCOs, so the block NCOs are combat marksmanship coaches. They are also trained, formally trained by my Marines at the Marksmanship Training Unit. And they, uh, for every thirteen shooters, now we have one of those blocks. So what essentially happens is if you go to the next slide, we have two additional lines of safety that, uh, that most ranges don't have. So here you see, if we were to have thirteen shooters, that would make, that would mean that we would have to have a minimum of four assistant range safety officers. We would then have a block non-commissioned officer who is a, who is trained, also for annual rifle qualification and combat, the pistol program. Those four Marines, the, the Marines, those assistant range safety officers, they also have to go through the three-week course for combat marksmanship coach. So not only do we have more personnel, every single one of those personnel are more, are highly trained by my staff at the Marksmanship Training Unit. So, um, what that ends up looking like is forced, four different lines of safety with the RSO and the range, uh, the range safety officer and the range officer in charge at the top, on the bottom on the slide in red. And then above that, your line non-commissioned officer who's also formally trained, on top of that, a block non-commissioned officer also formally trained, and then eventually all the way down to your assistant range safety officers or our coaches. So you have, um, and then overseeing all of that is myself, I have a gunnery sergeant, so an, uh, E-seven, uh, as my operations chief, and then another gunnery sergeant, um, E-seven, who is our staff non-commissioned officer in charge. So we have a significant amount of safety going on at Pualoa that just doesn't happen and other, so, and, and really any other range that you'll see in the Marine Corps, we have, we have a substantially more of a safety structure than you'd see anywhere else. You go to the next slide, please. So I, I said I was going to talk about surface danger zones and I'm going to come through with that, so. Um, Pualoa currently operations, operates using what's called a cone or a probabilistic SDZ, and I want to, I want to first tell you, like, the, the SDZs that we, that you may have seen at this board, that's what's called a deterministic SDZ. And without going like in, into the science behind it, for, the, the simplest way I can say is a deterministic SDZ is the worst or best-case scenario, whichever way you're going to look at that. But it's what that, what a round, what a, what a projectile would do out of a weapon if it's left to its own devices with zero, uh, mitigating circumstances put involved. So if you were to think the farthest it could go, you'd have to point at about a forty-five-degree angle, have a flat terrain and be, and, and it would fly as far as it can. Um, and there, there is nothing taken into, into account when you're looking at a deterministic SDZ. So, um, and, and I'll, on the second part of this, I'll talk about why probabilistic SDZs are different. Those cone SDZs that we use are deterministic SDZs, they are the, so a deterministic SDZ, because it is the worst-case scenario, is always the most safe SDZ that you can use. The reason why we use cone SDZs is because the, the training that we do is specifically, the, the range itself is purpose-built to mitigate ricochet hazards. So the first thing that the range has is it has both elevated firing points and target points. What that means is if I were, if, if you were to think about it as this podium and the table that the projector is sitting on, there is an area of low ground in between that, so the chances of a round, a projectile hitting the ground in between the, the, the firing point and the target point is, is very, very, is, is nothing if the weapon is pointed at the target. Uh, there, and that's when I, when I say ricochet, the ricochets that are dangerous ricochets are the ricochets that happen in between the target, the firing point and the target point, and that's why the range specifically is purpose-built to stop that from happening. What we also have on the range is there's absolutely no cross-firing allowed. A cross-firing would mean if I was on target point, so we'll, we'll take the annual rifle qualification range as an example, it has sixty target points. If I am on target point thirty, I may only, if I'm firing point thirty, I may only fire on, on target point thirty. Target point twenty-nine is too far left and target point thirty-one is too far right. And what the, if quickly could we, uh, go, I think it's two slides ahead. Right there, and that's a picture of target point thirty, so at every, and that's from the two-hundred-yard line, I know it's hard to see because it's two, it's two-hundred yards away, it's an eighth of a mile away from you right now, but on that, that yellow arrow, that is pointing straight downrange, there is, at every single firing point, there's a big number and every single target point on the, on the forty-foot wall behind those targets is a, uh, is a number that's approximately four feet by four feet painted. Um, it's impossible to miss the fact that you're, that that's your target from when you're shooting. Um, could you go back two slides, please, three minutes, two minutes, okay, all right. Um, so there is a, the, the other thing that we use is what's called an earthen berm with a nineteen-foot wall, so you've got about a twenty-one-foot earthen berm or feet tall with a nineteen-foot wall on top of that, so that, that looks about a forty-foot tall wall that's going to, that captures most of our munitions constituents, when I say a munition constituent, that's what the round's actually made of, that's the proper term for it. So that's what they're shooting into, that does not stop us from keeping the waterway clear. The waterway must stay clear. Um, the, the berm does, is not, the, the Marine Corps and the Army does not say that that berm is enough for us to say, yep, anybody can be behind it. We still have a beach guard, a, a Marine that's assigned to me on both the far east and far west side of the range, uh, on the beach, that makes sure that no one is within that danger area. So when we, we use the farthest that round can possibly travel at the best-case scenario or worst-case scenario, and we keep every, and if a vessel, a surfer, uh, low-flying aircraft gets anywhere within that, that area, they have the ability to call ceasefire. Um, and, uh, one more no on top of that is anyone on the range has the ability to call ceasefire, and that's, and we, when we make sure, so. And that's, and we, when we make sure, so I'm, and, and the, for time, let's go one more through and I, I just want to hit the probabilistic surface danger area. So when we have a unit up at Quantico, Virginia, at the headquarters of Marine Corps that creates this right here, you'll see the yellow and the red. The yellow is the initial impact of a round shot from, this is the longest flying round that we have, which is a 300 Win Mag. We fire from Alpha Range, which is the closest range to Eba Beach. The yellow is the initial impact, the red is the, the, where the final resting place. So if it were to skip on the water, as you can see, most of those rounds are in the water. Why that is, is because the, like I said before, we, we act as though the berm's not there when we create this. In, in actuality, if we were to run this through where the berm was taken into account, you would see possibly zero, I'm not saying it would be, because I haven't run, and I'm not, I'm not capable of running these programs, but you would certainly see a much reduced area of yellow and red out in the waterway. But again, that, that surface danger zone is what's called a probabilistic danger zone. And that is a program that we're not even authorized to run ourselves. It has to be run by the headquarters of Marine Corps. And that's the SDZ that comes out. So regardless of if that SDZ, if we started with a cone or a bat wing, which a bat wing is the other type of SDZ that we can use, regardless of if it was a cone or a bat wing, that's the shape that it would come out to be. And that would capture, would capture all those, those rounds that you see, the yellow and the red. And that's my time. There we go. Thank you, thank you very much for listening to me. I probably could go on for much longer because this is kind of the bread and butter of what I do and I'm, I'm passionate about what I do. But I, I'm also passionate about Eba Beach and I, I love being here. As some of you know, I like working with the community, so thank you for having me and thank you, board.
Okay, you might as well wait there. I think there's questions.
Okay, I'm ready.
Okay, board, any questions?
Go ahead.
First of all, thank you. Appreciate that and would love to get a copy of the presentation. Appreciate the time you put into answering.
You're welcome.
Last week, thank you. A couple of quick ones. One question first, and then I want to follow it up with a couple is, do you guys have a permit with US Coast Guard to fire over navigable waters?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay, because that is required according to your own regulations. And that was a question I sent, I sent 10 questions to Marine Corps Base Hawaii almost a month ago. That was one of the questions. According to, it, it should be listed if you do have one, so let me follow up. Sorry, did you want to answer that?
What I brought tonight, I brought 20 copies of the Waterway Bulletin CFR that we send to Coast Guard District 14. It gets published to mariners and et cetera. So the water beyond Pula Loa, the boundaries, is not navigable waters. It's a restricted area managed by Pearl Harbor Naval District. Okay, so that's, that should answer that question.
And I will add, whenever there is incursions into the waterway, regardless of if the, if the range is active or not, we do report that to Pearl Harbor, Harbor Operations. And if they have the time, sometimes they're, they're escorting strategic-level assets in and out of the port, so they don't answer that call. But most of the time, what they'll do is they'll answer that call and they will, will escort the, whoever that is in that waterway that's not authorized to be there out of that waterway.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm curious about the, the special-use airspace that I talked about last week because our understanding is, for example, Pula Kaulua has one. You've got, all the major installations have special-use airspace and it, it would apply to PRTF. Do you want to respond to why you guys have not established a special-use airspace?
Yeah, Liam, I'll jump in. So the FAA does, does not issue special-use airspace for small arms ranges. Pula Kaulua is a very different training area than Pula Loa. So for FAA questions, we can give you the contact info for the FAA. But as it stands, they do not issue special-use airspace for small arms ranges in the United States of America.
Okay, well, I don't think the FAA issues it at all because I'm looking at the Marine Corps' own manual here and it says, "Small arms ranges and any other activity considered to be hazardous to non-compatible other uses of the airspace, SUA is required to be designated and activated prior to conducting any activity above 150 feet to include ricochet ordinances that would be hazardous to aircraft." This is the Marine Corps Base DAPAM 385-62 2.4B. It says, "Small arms ranges and other activity considered to be hazardous."
Yeah, I can't speak for the FAA. And this is also the same question that you two gentlemen have asked Rep. Case to ask us. Rep. Case will have the answer that he's going to share with you. So you'll have a more formal answer from his office on, on that.
Okay, appreciate that. I, yeah, but just to clarify, it's not from the FAA, it's from, and the last question I had is about the bat wing because I was hoping you would, you would speak to that just really quickly is, your, your manual says that the back bat wing is safer than the cone. It says for the Marine Corps, the bat wing will be applied when designating or conducting training on ranges that involve ricochet hazards outside the boundary. The bat wing is considered the safer method?
I, I, right before I answer that, can you say the, the document you, for the special-use airspace again? What, what document you were using for?
Yep, and, and I sent it to these gentlemen a month ago, all these exact questions, but it's DAPAM 385-63 2.4B.
What is the year published on it?
I'm not certain, but I can get that to you.
It, do you have it in front of you? It should say it on the first page.
I don't have it right in front of me. I copied and pasted it into here. Yep, and I'll make sure you have that, thank you. Just wanted to ask about the bat wing.
The bat wing, so that, the bat wing sometimes is less safe. I, I will say that, that, that is, that is a broad statement that some, so I have created thousands of surface danger zones and recently I've created one that, that a bat wing was more permissive than a cone. So to say a bat wing is, is safer than a cone isn't necessarily correct. In this instance, so if you were to pull up the SDZ that, that you had created, it is a much larger SDZ than, than the, than the cone SDZ of the, with the same data in it. That ricochet hazards outside of the, or outside of the range boundaries, I think is the verbiage it's used. That is why Pula Loa is made, is designed the way it is, is to mitigate risk hazards outside of the installation. That is the reason why we do a mechanical zero, which is a, which is, it's a instrument called a collimator that you insert into the end of the rifle and you ensure that the rifle, the optic is, is mechanically zeroed to the rifle prior to shooting a single round out of it. And then the, the shooters do not move on, into a course of fire until their, their guns are zeroed. Now you, you add the, the safety structure, then that no one's cross-firing. And then really the, the fact that the, the range is built, purpose-built, so that those ricochets don't happen. And that is why a cone SDZ is applicable for Pula Loa, even though it is close, it, it shares a fence line with the community.
Okay, no, no, you had your final question, you gotta wait, let's wait till the next board member and we'll get back to you. Any other board members has any questions? See, now we're going to move to the, this community, Tara, go ahead.
So Tara Rojas, I only get one minute, yeah?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, so what stood out to me in, from your presentation is that you said the berm captures quote-unquote "most", you know, of like the shells. And then, two, that you have to cordon off beach access, like you have your people at one end and the other end. And then number three, the fact that there's still, you know, lead contamination, you know, in the water when they fly into the water. So you can, you know, give all the technical explanations you want, however the consequences stand. And just, you know, the basic common sense, you know, of not being in a neighborhood. And because of the effects that they have in the neighborhood for safety and health reasons.
Okay, thank you, Tara. Anyone from the community? Representative Alcos, anybody else? Anyone else? Please, anybody have any questions, please stand in line so I know who wants to ask a question? Okay, three, got it.
Thank you, Chair.
Name and question.
I came a little bit late, so maybe I missed some of the meeting. But we did a resolution a few months ago.
Excuse me, who are you?
Six months, Representative Alcos.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mitch. So we did a resolution maybe a few months ago, six months ago or so. And this resolution went pass at the Neighborhood Board and it passed also at the State Capitol to relocate the range. And so the community didn't want it. The, it passed to the state, didn't want it. What is the federal government doing about it? Are they ignoring the resolution or they're just making their own choices now to move forward and work on? Don't care of what the state or the members say. And the federal overruns what the people get to say. Is that the stance you guys taking?
Okay. He's going to answer that question, will be, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Chris.
Hey, how's it going? Corey Ascension, candidate House Representative District 40. The owner of, uh?
Owner of order, Chair. I put this in the rules of speaking.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Stop. You did this last time, stop. There will be, and in fact, if you're going to do this, then we have to allow other candidates or potential candidates at this meeting to announce.
Well, I didn't hear that last time, my, sorry, my bad.
Excuse me. Excuse me. I put that out at the beginning, but now since you've opened that can of worms, we have to allow anyone else in this meeting who wants to announce their candidacy, to do that. So I specifically said, do not make political statements that you intend to run for office. But now that you've done that, we have to open the door for anyone else to make that statement.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, I have a question. Can we go back to the slide that shows the shooting over the water? Yeah, the bat wing.
Not the bat wing.
I mean, it is a bat wing. You, you're saying the yellow is where the bullets land and the red is where?
Their final resting place, correct. If the berm was not there. If the berm, if the berm, the berm and the, the 40-foot berm and wall did not exist because the, the program does, is, does not have the data in it to, to make up for that.
Does it still land over there? I mean, few of them, more, a lot?
So I, I cannot answer that question with any, any kind of, what I can see is I can see the, the rounds impacting the berm on our side of the wall. I can then see, when I said most, I meant, what I meant by that is that you can see the fact that when those, when those bullets impact the soil, those, some of those bullets will break apart. And those broken, what we call munitions constituents, hit the wall above it. Because we have acoustic paneling on the wall that makes it so that, that it takes the sound of the range and makes it far less for, both for the shooters and for the community. Those ballistic, or those acoustic panels are being struck by, by pieces of rounds. So when I said most of it's being captured by the berm, what I did not mean was that the, those munitions constituents are making their way over the berm and into the, into the beach line. That is a completely different discussion, however. And I think that the Marine Corps Base Hawaii is doing a, a very good job of getting good sampling data to, to see if that's a problem, but from observational data, I can't really make a determination.
Is there any studies that you see them in the water or do you guys do some kind of cleanup?
So the, the cleanup that we do is in our own berms. So every three to five years, it's becoming more and more frequent. We clean our berms to get the lead out of our berms. But again, that is on the Pula Range Training Facility side of those berms. There, there is, we do that so that the berms don't become over-inundated with lead. What, that is not an environmental operation, that is not, that is a range sustainability operation that we do. And that's, but that's, that's the, that's the only clearing of berms that we do on Pula.
Right, right.
Thank you. Ma'am, do you have a question? Please state your name and your question, please.
It's Radica. So I heard you guys say that this Pula is very different from all the other ranges that you have here in the islands. What you didn't say is that it's the only one in a neighborhood, so I'm just, I heard you say all these things about how you take different, like precautions, you have all these different people on, like, on this, taking care of them. There's berms, but I don't, I didn't hear that that still can mitigate the bullets going to the water, like you said. So I just, I guess I'm concerned that, why not use the cone when that sounds like that is the safer route to go in terms of protecting our community? Because like I said, it is the only range that is in a community, in a neighborhood with literally a beachpark on one side and a school, a school on the other side. So I think it's the safest thing is to use the safest protocols that you guys have. So why not use the safest protocols? One, and then to echo actually Rep. Alcos, and I know this might be a separate thing, but the, the resolutions were passed and it's great to have all these technical conversations, but I think it should also be a conversation of, are the Marines looking at other areas to have this range and to train? Because it was voted to move it out of our neighborhood. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Hello, I have a question. The SDZ, the bat wing.
Using the bat wing. You have an answer to that?
I, I can, I can talk to, to the reason, so the, what, what I am charged to do is, is to follow the, what is appropriate for the range training facility. Whether that range training facility was next to a, a community or not, we're, we're going to use what's appropriate for the range. So honestly, the cone and, and bat wing SDZ question is, is agnostic to where that range would be. The, the appropriate SDZs are what we're going to use. And that the appropriate SDZ, as, as was shown there, is, is the probabilistic one because it is the one that's backed by science.
Alex, you got something, go ahead.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make the point that, so you know, when we're talking about the bat wing, the, the protocol says that if there's any ricochet hazard outside the range boundary that may endanger non-participating personnel, that's the public. So the, the manual here states that that's, that's, a bat wing needs to be used. We, you said that the 40-foot wall may protect bullets, stop bullets from going in the water, but it still could happen and that's why boaters aren't allowed to be there. So then we have the little side berms that are much lower. Those aren't going to stop, even if the thing was designed to minimize ricochet, it can still happen. And it says right here, if there's non-participating personnel that is a potential hazard, you have to use the bat wing zone, the bat wing. So do you have a response to that?
I, I do, and it's the same, the same response that I had for, for Liam. It, it is, the, the range is purpose-built not to create those ricochet hazards. It is, it is constructed in a way that those ricochet hazards are mitigated. And I will also, to go further and say that those lateral side, the ladder, the much smaller lateral side berms are, the, the lateral side berm that's closest to Eba Beach is not mitigating ricochet hazards from Eba Beach. The, what, what you would see is if we, that, that's called what, what the Marine Corps calls terrain deviating. We do not train, deviate our SDZs to keep them within the installation because of those lateral side berms. Those lateral side berms are for the participating personnel and the participating personnel only.
And Alex, the, the verbiage, the ricochet is accounting for if the berm was not there. And so if the berm stops the, the round, right? If it ricochets off something beyond the boundary of the range, right? That ricochet hazard is outside of our control. So if the berm was not there and you're just firing out into the space and it were to ricochet, say if there was a mountain behind it and hit a rock or whatever, that's the ricochet hazard that that verbiage is addressing.
Okay. Tara, you got another question? Wait, hold on real quick. You got, you said a final, final question? You had one more, right?
I just, I guess my question was, really then what keeps the bullets in? Because what I'm hearing, if I'm understanding what you're saying is that, and no disrespect, but everything you're saying is a contradiction to your own regulations and manual. And what I'm hearing is you've created all your own methods, custom-made for this range. But what, as a hunter, I own 10 guns. I know what happens when you shoot a bullet and it hits another bullet that's already embedded in the berm, it can ricochet off. That's what the calculations look at here, right? That's why we have a bat wing or a cone, is it looks at, in theory, how far could the bullet ricochet? Based on the caliber of the weapon. So what I'm not understanding is what's keeping the bullets inside the range? You're saying it's, You're saying it's, it's made so that no ricochets could be possible? That, that to me, I've never heard of that. And it also, in the end, how do you, how do you justify not following what the manual says versus just what you think is the best? Like you said earlier, in your opinion, the bat wing is not always safer, but the manual says it is. So should we go by the manual or should we go by your opinion?
First, it, it was not my opinion. I said that I have created a bat wing that was more, that was more permissive than a cone. And that was in a very specific circumstance. And I, and I also said that that does not apply in this circumstance. I said that the broad statement that a cone is less safe than a, than a bat wing is not true. In this case, I said it was true. Right, a cone is a larger area, so it would be, let's call it safer. I'm saying a bat wing, a bat wing is a larger area in this circumstance, so yes, it is, it is correct. But I'm not, I, I never, that was never an opinion. That was a fact, that I've, I've created one. So the, what was the first part of your question? Oh, the, the ricochets. So like I said before, the, the dangerous ricochets that caused, that, that caused the rounds to go to within where a bat wing, the, the extra area that a bat wing has are those impacts in between the target and the berm. Those ricochets are mitigated from the, because the firing lines and the target points are elevated because of the safety, the safety precautions that we put into place, the, because of the, the pre, the mechanical zero and then the zero and then the static positions that the Marines are firing in and the known distance that the Marines are firing. The range, not only the, the, the construction of the range, but also the conduct of the training that they're doing mitigates those risks of, of ricochets between the shooter and its, and their intended target.
Okay, going on, back online, we'll go real quick. MP, whoever, I don't see a name, I just see MP.
Chair, Mike Plowman. Thanks for your time. I would like to point out that a warrant officer didn't answer Mr. Chin's question. The question was what actually contains fragments that do ricochet? I mean, there, they may have methods to reduce ricochets, but they can eliminate them. Oftentimes, we hear over that very loud speaker, no impact, no idea, while they're giving feedback to the, to the, to the shooters. Sounds to me like they don't know where the bullet went and that it's, it's, it's not on the range. Maybe that's true. Maybe there's more they can add to that. But for the waiver that you guys have to, have to, you have to be able to demonstrate a method of containment of projectiles if you're gonna get a waiver from a bat wing. And do, do you guys have a waiver from a bat wing? And what is your method of containment of projectiles that might escape the range? I don't think you have one, do you?
The, there is not a waiver necessary because a cone is the applicable SDZ for this. So I, I, but no impact, no idea is a verbiage that the range uses that is, is misleading if you're not used to a Marine Corps annual rifle qualification range. That means that, that, so when the tar, when the Marines are down, scoring the targets, they're actually downrange when they score the targets, they're underneath the targets and what we call the pits. They see a splash on the, when I say a splash, they see the dirt kick up from a round hitting the berm. Then they pull their, that's underneath the, the number of that target that they're pulling on. They pull those targets down to score them, and there's not a hole on the target. That means, and there's not a hole on the target adjacent to them to the left or right. That means that they know where that round went, but they can't give the shooter an accurate idea of where it went because it did not hit a target. It hit in between one of the targets that they were, that they were shooting at and the target next to them. So we know that those targets, those, those rounds went into the berm. We just don't know where in, in respect to the, the intended target that round went. So we can't, so it's feedback back to the shooter, not like, that someone shot a round and we have no idea where it went. That is, that is not the intent of that statement.
Okay, Tara, last one, go ahead.
So listen to all of your explanation and having, you having heard the community and the res- resolution. My question to you is, do you understand that the community does not want it in addition to the, the ricochet, the lead contamination, and even the noise of the speaker and the shooting itself? I can hear all the way down here. Will, my question is, will you listen to the, the want of the community and be a good neighbor and move? Will you ever move?
I don't, I don't have the authority to, to make that decision to, to move.
So can you find somebody and bring them that, who can answer the question? Because I've noticed with all of the military, Navy, Marines, the typical question, the answer is, I do not have the ability to. I'll push it up the chain of command. So can you bring somebody? Because this has been a discussion for two years now plus. And now you've heard that there is a resolution that we do not want this.
Thank you, Tara. Thank you.
And Tara, this is Major Fox. I, I can assure you that we understand you, we, we're listening to you. We, and I can also assure you that this has been pushed up to the chain of command, to the highest levels. There are discussions about Pula Lua happening every day, and we will continue to engage and listen to the community via this Neighborhood Board Forum. And you're also free to submit, you know, questions to the, to our organizational mailbox.
Thank you. I, I have one question. Since, I mean, I guess since you started working there, have you ever heard any ricochets at the elementary schools, housing areas, all in that area? Any ricochets or?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. We're moving on, we're already stayed on this for forty minutes. We need to move on. No, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, thank you, and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Eva Mahico Gymnasium Murals.
Aloha, everyone. Aloha, Chair and Board members. My name is Marion Kadora, and I'm with the Mayor's Office of Culture and the Arts with the City and County of Honolulu. And we manage, my position, I manage the public art for the City and County of Honolulu. Our advisory board is the Commission on Culture and the Arts. And one of our recent projects, we've been allocated, there's a law, one percent law, when there's a new city building, one percent of that construction budget goes to a new artwork. So one percent of the budget for the EMV building in Honouliuli that is currently being built right now was allocated to Moka to create a new artwork. This particular EMV building is not fully publicly accessible, so our Commission on Culture and the Arts has decided to move it outside of that building into a building that is more accessible. So we spent some time doing kind of an inventory of buildings, primarily in parks, that are very publicly accessible. So we are, we've identified the Eva Mahico Gymnasium. And so we will be creating two artworks at Eva Mahico Gymnasium, one on the exterior and one on the interior. This, in, in order to create art, the way that we go about the process is we do a public call for artists that goes around the nation. We, of course, really target our local artists. For the exterior mural, our call for artists closed in January, and we've narrowed down the finalists to three artists. Ka'ili Chan, Solomon, Solomon Enos, and Todd Estria Johnson, who's part of Ballet Murals, maybe some of you that are familiar in the arts know these names. And in April, we will be selecting the finalists for that project along with their designs. And so the reason I am here today is first, we want to inform the community about, about this project. And we would love to be able to involve the community as much as possible. This is really about placemaking, telling the, the Mo'olelo of, of these sites, often Mo'olelo that is kind of sometimes forgotten or lesser-known stories. So we would really love to be able to connect with any community, community members that have deep roots in the area of Eva Mahico Gymnasium. And if it is appropriate, I would love to be able to come back perhaps in May or June and, and share the designs with everyone to offer an opportunity to give any feedback. So we will be selecting an artist again, April tenth, at our next Commission on Culture and the Arts for the exterior mural. And then we'll be selecting an artist for the interior artwork in May. So I'm happy to share the, the dates with, with Chair and with anyone who would like to participate in that meeting. This is a public meeting that everyone is welcome to join.
Thank you. Any questions for the board? Any questions for the community? You can also add it into the chat, so it, it'll go on to all the community as well.
Okay.
All that information, and you can just double-check it as well.
Okay.
Let's, I do have just one comment.
Alex, go ahead.
Hey, thanks so much for that. It's super exciting to hear about the murals that are gonna go up. And I would strongly encourage you to come back and, and the artists to come back and any preliminary ideas and get feedback. I think that'd be fantastic, so please do.
Okay, that sounds great. We'll definitely do that. So we'll, I'll probably plan to come back in June because I think we'll have both designs at that time, and then we can just do them simultaneously. And we would love any feedback.
What is the, what is the process of selection for the artists? Is there, this is probably gonna be an O'lelo later, so if someone wanted to say, throw their hat in the ring to, to do that, is there a particular process that they have to go through?
So for applying for the project?
Yes, to be an artist.
Yes, so it is a public call for artists. So we generate a public call that goes out to everyone. We use a system called Call for Entry. And this is accessible to anyone in the nation. But the way that our commission selects artists is we're really looking for, for artists that are able to show connection to that place because it's the stories and involving the community and community voices is, is really key. So very often it goes to our, our local artists.
Okay, so do they have to register? For example, if there's an artist up and coming here in Eva Beach and they, and they would like to participate, but they're not already connected into that network, how do they go about getting?
So all of the information is on our website. Our website is www.honolulumoka.org. You can just Google Mayor's Office of Culture and the Arts. Currently, we are still, we still have an open call for proposals for the interior artwork. So if you do know of Eva-based artists, we would love to hear from them. This is a call for proposals, so it would require them to kind of generate an initial idea for the project.
Thank you.
Think they get too much spray paint? Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the community online? See none? Okay, we'll set you up. Oh, we have one. Go ahead. Rep? Alcos? Or step over there? Oh, can I, can I hear what you're talking about?
I just asked for her number after.
Okay, got it. I telling, okay. Okay, thank you very much. So we'll set you up for June to come back and hopefully bring the artists and maybe have a lot better ideas for the, for the artwork.
We'll bring some visual aids as well.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to residents, community concerns, community announcements. Wister, you have something?
I do. So I just want to remind everyone, as I spoke earlier, I'm sure many of you saw the exchange. From the Rules of Speaking, the Eva Neighborhood Board is an advisory board, and we provide fairness, integrity, and collaboration to all to increase and assure the effective citizen participation in the decisions of government. I add an addendum to that, asking personnel not to make public statements about whether or not they were running for office or if they're a candidate for office. Because the gentleman has already done this, it is a matter of rule that we have to open the floor to anyone else that is perhaps running for office and would like to make a statement. There may or may not be anyone here, and that's fine, but we have to, in, in order to assure fairness, we have to open the floor to anyone else that may or may, that may be running for office. Anyone? Okay, see you in on chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to residents, community concerns, and community announcements. So anyone in the community has a community concern or announcement, please step to either of the mics, state your name, your concern, or your announcement, please.
Aloha, board, thank you. Susan Gorman Chang, I'm here to invite all of you, especially the neighborhood boards and the community, to our Water Protectors Appreciation Picnic. This is to celebrate that all of the neighborhood boards sound, signed a resolution to shut down Red Hill. So it is, we'll fly over here, Magic Island, Saturday, March twenty-third, eleven to three, picnic table area number thirty-two. So everyone is invited. We're gonna have a lot of food and games and fun just to celebrate the solidarity with the neighborhood boards on Shut Down Red Hill. And then also, I'm one of the ten elected Community Representation Initiative Committee Members, and we have a CRI meeting next Thursday, March twenty-first, from five o'clock to eight o'clock PM at O'Lelo Studios. It's gonna be broadcast live and also recorded, so you can see it live or later. And I will put both these flyers over there.
Thank you. Anyone else in the community? Step up to either mic, your name and your concern, please.
Good evening, Chairman and Board. My name is Stephen Kimura, from Eva Beach. Hi, my name is Stephen Kimura. Good evening, Chairman and Board. I'm from Eva Beach, I live here forty years. I live on Hanukkah and Ikulani Street. And I seen through the past years, more handicapped people coming on the road. I live on the corner, and there's no way that handicapped people can go up on the ramp because I had to go, almost help one, he almost fell down because the ramp is a forty-five-degree angle cement. And when, there's no crosswalk. So, so when the cars come from Fort Weaver Road, they turn right, I live on the corner, the next left is Ronnie Road. And there's no crosswalk or anything, so the people just zoom by over there. That's the reason why they put the speed bumps over there, because people speed. They banged my fire hydrant three times already on the corner. Accidents all the time happen, you know, there's, many people die in the corner. And I see handicapped people going against the green because they cannot go on top of sidewalk. And I tried helping one, but I guess he was kind of upset because he couldn't get up on the wall. So he went on the main road against the, against the oncoming traffic, and that really scared me because I seen so much people die over there. And that's why I'm here tonight, just to put my concern on that. If you can make one ramp on two sides of, east and west side of, and put on crosswalk so that people at least can come from one end or the other to the sidewalk to get to the bus. We all gonna get old someday. We're gonna need something at Eva Beach. And if you go down Hanukkah Street, there's nothing like that. You know, so I'm just a little concerned about this. I getting old. I might be over there, that place, I see, I see these people every day. I don't know them personally, but I feel like they're my friends because I tell them hi every day. It's my neighbors, I don't know where they live. I just concerned about that. Thank you.
Thank you. So you guys, Eva Beach residents, as you're coming into Eva Beach, you take the left onto Hanukkah. Take that first right, like you're in Kurt's house, that house right on the corner, that's what you're talking about. So you take that left, everybody like zoom past the light and get onto Hanukkah, yeah? So they're not seeing the oncoming, the guys, no more, no more sidewalks, or get guys on the wheelchair coming up. So it's like, you know, so that's, he's concerned that he see that every day. Yeah. Yeah, so the curb, the guy was trying to get up, is, is too steep. Thank you, Mr. Kimura, Kimura. Okay, anybody else? Okay, one, two, anybody else? Three, okay. Please go up to any, any other mic, state your guys' name and your community concern, please.
He reminded me of something, which is I live at the end of Fort Weaver Road, down by the park, Pula Lua Park. And for, they put in speed bumps like higher, like closer up Fort Weaver Road, but we really need speed bumps down at the end, right before the park area and down on Eva Beach Road, so like they intersect Fort Weaver and Eva Beach Road. We really, really need speed bumps down there. People are drag racing at all hours of the night. It's incredibly dangerous. There's little kids that are on scooters and bikes and stuff that are on the road because it's a dead-end road, right? And people come and like, I literally saw guys on motorbikes like doing donuts at the end there. It's super scary. And I know that you. It's super scary. And I know that you guys are, you know, it's a state thing. But we, the community, I know would really appreciate if we could advocate for speed bumps down there.
Thank you. And all the community that has concerns or any announcement, please fill out one of these half sheets that's on the desk over there. And NA will give it to the right representative, Senator, city county, elected official. So just fill one of these out. Hey, two more. One. Anyone? Come up to the mic and state your name, oh.
You have to use the mic so everyone else can hear you. Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I have to use the mic.
There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I couldn't hear a lot of people, so that's why I was just going to talk loud. I'll still talk loud. Good evening. I came to, I came about the washboards being installed on Hawaii Road as a solution to speeding. Besides this, I believe when new roads are being put in, sections of the old road are left undone, also a solution to speeding. I have an example for that. So number one, these unfair techniques to stop speeding are very hard on our vehicles over time, even loosening the engine. Number two, I'm a pretty happy person, but I just been swearing a blue streak mentally, getting off the H1 freeway at Eva and hitting those sets of washboard boards to get to Fort Weaver Road. Number three, this unnatural bouncing up and down is bound to cause health problems for drivers and passengers alike, not everybody, but some. So I'm saying, we should not be accepting either of these solutions for speeding. So please use your abilities and your resources to put the speeding solution where it belongs. Thank you very much. If you want this, I'll give it to you.
What was your name?
Barbara.
Barbara, last name?
Oh, Jesse.
Jesse, got it. Thank you. So the washboard that you're talking about is the rumble strip? On the sides? Oh, I got it. Okay. I think that's more of a DUI falling asleep instead of speeding. If I'm, I give me, pro, I mean, Officer Bacon, the rumble strips are primarily used for?
To wake up DUI drivers. No, it's supposed to, it's supposed to slow you down, but it's not as effective as.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Frances Tapies-Andrian. I would like to present the board, as well as the chair, with Ordinance 166 to remove Section 3 and provide HPD substation with memo of ordinance as well as dispatch with the ordinance that removes parts of O'Waha Street, Kamahoy Street, and sorry, and Halolani Street in Eva. May I give this to you?
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with ordinance 60. Can you just explain what this is exactly?
Ordinance 166 was passed in 2016. That removes, and it states per the ordinance, the ordinance takes into effect in 2018. The ordinance states in Section 1, "The purpose of this ordinance is to permit on-street parking in certain areas." Section 2, "For vehicles parking on Halolani Street, Eva Beach, Hawaii, Maliko Street, Eva Beach, Hawaii, and a portion of O'Waha Street between Kamahoy Street and Maliko Street in Eva Beach, Hawaii, only notwithstanding Section 15141, revised ordinance of Honolulu, a vehicle may be parked within four feet of either side of the public or private driveway on all the streets, like said."
Our request is to remove what? Again?
Uh, Section 3. It's, it takes effect upon the approval and shall be repealed on December 31st, 2018. According to, there were, according to the city clerk, there was nothing in regards to 2018 from that point on. So I am assuming that it has been repealed since 2018. Just some history, last week, on March 11th and 12th, HPD was called and was citing parking in that areas. Sure.
So just to clarify your question, are you asking the board to request the city to extend the expiration on?
Well.
Or to renew it so that cars are again able to park off-street? Okay, thank you.
Or even just delete or omit that section?
Okay. Again, so I'm going to add to that because I get one, another one that says on Alwani, oh no, what is that? Alva Street, that's part of that ordinance. So that's the first left and right turn into Renton Road when you come in. Yeah, so that's all the rest of the roads on the inside. Couple of them, they're missing no parking signs, so people are parking.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know where the no parking signs are.
There's a safety issue we can bring up after, but.
Yeah.
So what you want is to kind of put this back in and have no ending date?
Yes.
So this is a House bill, Senate bill, and?
Um, it is Ordinance 166.
House Resolution.
The House bill was supported by?
Stronger and also, yeah, okay, got it. So we'll add it all on here and we'll get it to the mayor's rep and also the council members, I mean,
Thank you.
Representatives are here as well. Okay, anyone else in the community has any concern or announcement? Okay, we have three online. Okay, Tara, go ahead.
Hello, Tara. My concern is, again, the water. So I want to just bring it to everyone's attention that there has been, you know, detection shared with the CRI, the water, sheen in water outside of the Navy line, like in Pearl City, Aia, and Kapole. So we still have to be aware that this water crisis is not over, which brings me to point number two, the consequences of overdevelopment. You can see in an article that came out Waikoloa in Hawaii Island, for example, July 11th, 2023, Four Mile Beach, right now, like in Hilo, February 14th, 2024. And for example, Kialakehe, the sewage plant lawsuit, February 6th, 2024, where just high levels, you know, bacteria, the sewage being pumped into the ocean like over 1 million gallons. And so this aftereffect of this overdevelopment. Right now, as well, in Punaloo, Ka'ua, the Hawaii island, is standing up, speaking up to preserve that part of the island. Right now, you know, we have in Eva, we have Haseko, we have Hunt, we have Ho'opili, and we have Gentry. Okay, so reminding everyone of the sewage spill that happened February 4th, 2023, and the CBS News article that came out March 28th, 23, regarding BWS stating themselves, the opening of Waikai, it's a sore spot for our community. And three, the fact that the 15 to 20 million gallon unknown leak in Gentry is still happening to this day. And Bernie Lau himself, in that article, quoted "The wave pool is a sore spot. We're learning from that." And the fact that we have to conserve water, but yet they have that wave pool and that proposed second wave pool, we really need to speak up as a community to, to aole this. Otherwise, we're going to be in the article with contamination and sewage spills. Mahalo.
Thank you. Moving on to Mike, go ahead.
Chair Mike Plowman, I just, I have a concern that I'd like to share. I spent a career, 20-year career in the Navy, flying mostly out of Barber's Point and Kanaui. After the Navy, I spent two stints with two local inter-island airlines and an international airline, all three, two of them based in Honolulu and one of them flies in and out of Honolulu. I am intimately familiar with the airspace surrounding PRTF, the shooting range. And I've talked to Colonel Bevan and I've heard tonight's presentation. And my concerns are not assuaged a bit. In fact, I am increasingly alarmed. The Marine Corps says that a lot of, that the flight paths are either behind them or out of range. And that's just not true at all. There is no one flight path for any given runway. The planes can approach from any direction on the compass. And they fly within their surface danger zones hundreds of times a day while they're operating out there. They say they call ceasefire. I've never seen them actually call ceasefire for an airplane that is clearly approaching the range. They have two observers, one on either side of the beach that looks out over the water, can't see the airspace above them or behind them. And they have no method of determining how far away planes are anyway. All of the runways, all four runways at Honolulu International Airport are within their surface transition zones that are protected areas, all are overlapping with the STZ. And because I'm short on time, I'm just going to say that I believe there is a clear and present danger to air traffic, the passengers and the air crews. I think people should do what my family does. We no longer fly in and out of Honolulu International Airport during the day, during the week. I believe it presents a hazard to air navigation and a aeronautical study needs to be conducted. It's a serious issue. They couldn't, they couldn't get a surface, a special use airspace if they wanted to because they couldn't qualify. That's all. Thanks very much, Chair.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, moving on to Rodney, go ahead.
Hello, Chair, board members. First off, thank you for serving on the neighborhood board. Being a previous neighborhood board member, I very much appreciate all your efforts. Number two, my standard spiel is Eva, Eva Beach communities, please consider being a Red Cross volunteer here in our communities. Now during blue skies, but more importantly, before we have a disaster. Wildfires, flooding are key preparedness issues. Look up Red Cross Hawaii to find out all the different volunteer opportunities. And if you are interested, I can provide my information as a Red Cross volunteer. Always looking for other people to help with logistics, to get pallets moved to where they need to get to Maui, et cetera, during the last disaster and ongoing issues. Secondly, or third, is that for your information, there are various Vietnam Veterans Events upcoming at the end of the month. Please consider thanking your Vietnam veterans and their families for their service and sacrifice. Thank you very much. Mahalo.
Thank you, Rodney. Now we're going to open up to the board members. Any board members have any community announcements or concerns? Okay, go ahead, Trey.
I just want to stand on this side, Mr. Chair, so I could face the board members in case they have questions for me. Mr. Chair, with your permission, I would like to request to read papers. That's a motion that requires a second and a majority vote. The paper would be the resolution that I'm proposing that we would consider at our next meeting for a vote. Is there a, I don't mean to presume to take the chair's place, but is there a second?
Question. A motion's being made by a community member and not a member of the board for something for the agenda item? Wouldn't it be more appropriate to be a member of the board to do that?
Yeah, but you don't have to make a motion. You're just reading, because it's under, you're just reading it for informational right now. And if you wanted to add to the board, because we can't add nothing to the board right now because we don't have eight. We only have seven, one, two, three.
So what is the motion you're making?
It's a motion to read a paper.
You don't need a motion. As a resident, you can read that, the reso, yeah.
Okay.
We're not, we're not taking any action right now, yeah.
Yes, yes. So if you, so if you allow me a moment. So there's two aspects to what I'm about to say. The first is that I've drafted a resolution that would establish a Pula Range Training Facility Permitted Interaction Group, as was described at the beginning under Board Business. And what I was request is permission to read it here. It's not a matter for Board Business, which means it will, it's not on the agenda. We will not be voting on it tonight. But this is an opportunity to raise potential amendments that I can include so that we are as efficient as possible next time, okay? Whereas the Eva Neighborhood Board adopted a resolution in support of eliminating the threat to the health and safety of the Eva Beach community by relocating live-fire training away from the Pula Range Training Facility at its regular meeting on Wednesday, March 29th, 2023, by a vote of six to zero to two. And whereas on both Wednesday, February 14th, and Thursday, February 15th, 2024, Marine Corps Base Hawaii conducted an environmental sampling of the shoreline adjoining Pula Range Training Facility and forwarded the samples to an environmental protection agency certified on-island laboratory for analysis. Whereas board members were invited individually to attend said environmental sampling. And whereas board members have been featured individually and in groups in Honolulu Civil Beat articles concerning investigations into possible lead contamination at PRTF. And whereas board members have participated individually and in groups in meetings with elected officials and other community stakeholders concerning PRTF. And whereas such public events and appearances may create situations where official board business is discussed among board members and where elected officials and other community stakeholders may erroneously believe that individual board members may be speaking on the entire board's behalf. And whereas the policy of the state under the Sunshine Law, as codified in HRS Chapter 91, Part 1, requires that except under certain specific exceptions, "All discussions, deliberations, decisions, and actions of a board related to official business that is before the board or that is reasonably likely to come before the board in the foreseeable future must be conducted in a public meeting." And whereas the board anticipates that in light of ongoing environmental testing and investigations, official business concerning PRTF is reasonably likely to come before the board in the foreseeable future. And whereas in the meantime, the board finds it necessary to ensure that any communications, interactions, discussions, investigations, and presentations of board members concerning PRTF are permitted interactions under the Sunshine Law now. Therefore, be it resolved that the Eva Neighborhood Board hereby establish a PRTF Permitted Interaction Group consisting of the following board members. And note as an aside that I leave this line blank so that we can have a discussion about who would be the appropriate members. And be it further resolved that the PRTFPIG is hereby collectively authorized to investigate matters concerning ongoing testing at the PRTF to include site inspections and visits and report their resulting findings and recommendations to the entire board at a properly noticed meeting. Yet further resolved that the PRTFPIG may collectively present, discuss, or negotiate the position on PRTF that the board adopted by resolution as referenced above with elected officials or other community stakeholders, provided that they report set activities to the entire board. And be it further resolved that the PRTFPIG, if I may, Mr. Chair, may attend informational meetings concerning the PRTF, provided that the members who attended must report their attendance and the matters presented and discussed that are related to official board business to the entire board. And finally, be it further resolved that the PRTFPIG shall be dissolved only by A, unanimous written consent of the PIG members sent to the board chair and neighborhood assistant; B, by a majority vote of the board at a duly noticed official meeting; or C, at the end of the current elected term of board membership. or C, at the end of the current elected term of board members. And so the, the most important note there with the be it further resolved is that that is the full extent of what a PIG can do under the Sunshine Law. So we can constrain it more narrowly than that if we would like, but this gives it all the powers it could be possibly assigned under the Sunshine Law to begin with. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you guys have any comments on it? Okay, go ahead.
Uh, it would be extremely helpful. I've, I've never been asked to comment on a resolution that was read out loud to me. It's typical protocol to email resolutions to the board members well advance of the meeting and ask them to, in their time, to look at what you're proposing so they, and then they can respond accordingly. And the other, uh, just one amendment off the top of my head, I think, needs to go in there regarding conflict of interest. I spoke to the Neighborhood Commission Office, um, about, um, cases where, um, individual board members might in some way be compensated by certain government institutions, perhaps the military. Uh, they might, their organization might even receive grants from the military. Um, that, that under, uh, Neighborhood Commission Office regulations, that, that conflict of interest needs to be stated. So we're going to have a PIG group focus exclusively on the issue of this shooting range. Um, any board members that participate in it that may have any conflicts of interest, as previously I just stated, would need to state those as well.
Okay, any other questions? You know, okay, Alex, go ahead.
I mean, I guess, I'm, I'm not familiar with this process, so I, I don't know. I'm open to entertaining. I, I wonder how that, so does that mean that no communications are allowed individually with, say, on, on a matter? So every, every communication that an individual has, say, not just PRTF, but if you establish this group or any theme, that everything has to be like vetted by the pig? And before, like a communicate, I'm sorry, I mean, maybe we'll have that at a future meeting, but I'm trying to understand, like, what that actually means.
Yeah, so, uh, I am not the expert in the room on, uh, the Sunshine Law. Uh, but I can say that as, uh, Vice Chair described at the beginning, uh, individual board members acting in their individual capacity and not representing the board in any way, shape, or form, uh, that's perfectly permitted under the Sunshine Law regardless. So the, in, introducing a pig would not, uh, change that, because that's, um, still allowed. That's still an exception under the Sunshine.
I guess then, I mean, there, maybe there's someone knows this, but I mean, that's a real, that's a gray area, right? And so I, I think, I mean, it can be. If people can say that you were speaking on behalf of the board when you weren't, like what we heard earlier today. And so that, how do we, how do you control that? And maybe this isn't a discussion for right now, but is there, are there clear guidelines on that?
Yes, so, so the, the key point here in this, um, second, I think it's the second be it for the resolve, is that, um, the PIG is exclusively authorized to, um, present discussion, negotiate, uh, the position that the PRTF, uh, on the PRTF that the board adopted by resolution. So, um, individuals acting in their individual capacity would not be speaking for the board, nor could they negotiate or clarify on the board's behalf. Uh, only the, the PIG would have the ability to do that, and that is consistent with the Sunshine Law.
Okay, thank you. Hey, John, you got something?
Yeah, just, uh, a, a comment. Uh, Alex, uh, the, the way I described it at the beginning, it just really, it, it formalizes the communication between the board and other outside organizations. And this specific example, the PRTF, that's all it does. It just, it basically says if people are gonna be talking to PRTF, asking for information on behalf of the board, it just formalizes that process. That's all it does.
Can I ask a follow-up question on that? So, uh, so what if people are asking questions to, uh, the Marine Corps Base Hawaii, not on behalf of the board, but on behalf of them as a board member representing their constituents? I represent everybody in Eva Beach. So when I ask for information from the Marine Corps Base, it's I'm doing my duty as a, on behalf of my constituents. It's not on behalf of the board or for the board. How do you make that distinction?
It is a, a matter of rule under the, just regular citizenry. As a private citizen, you can ask whatever you want. That's, the, the distinction is that you cannot do it on behalf of the board unless it's been specifically sanctioned by the board. That's the only distinction.
Okay, understood, but I just, last thing, I'm still not understanding, how would you know that? This, how would you know whether that person is doing it on behalf of the board versus us, an individual?
Okay, well, I'm gonna defer to the NCO Assistant.
So for that, that's, that's kind of primarily why the, the permitted action group, interaction group is so important, because it makes things formal. I understand, Member Chin, where you're coming from, being a, an individual on the board representing your constituents, that's far, it, it is good. But having a PIG, the permitted interaction group, makes it formal, makes interactions between the board or the representation of the board and the military or the Navy or whichever group formal. That way, there's no, there's no gray area. If there's an individual doing it, it presents a lot of gray area that can get misconstrued in a lot of different ways, which is what we don't want, because then that could unintentionally or intentionally violate the Sunshine Law, which is what, of course, the board does not want to do.
Corey, you got something? Go ahead.
Yeah, so, as I understand it, the pig can work with the group and then, but any action that the group decides has to come back to the neighborhood board for a final vote or action. But it just gives them the authority to have these conversations on behalf of the board, but it's not finalized.
Okay, thank you, Trey.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other residents, community concerns, or community announcements? Oh, you got something? Okay, oh, sorry about that. Go ahead.
Uh, I just would like to make a general comment that, uh, I, I think what we're witnessing here tonight is really a good example. Many of us may have different feelings, opinions, um, and, and often disagree with one another. But this is the form in which we do this and we, and we formalize it. We, we work our way through the process and we eventually get to where we want to go. But the important thing is that we're communicating and, as Alex and I exchanged earlier, on an even keel basis and communicating professionally and purposefully. So on that, I'd like to thank my fellow board members. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Uh, moving on to other monthly reports. Hunt VA Clinic.
First off, good evening, everyone. Members of the board, members of the community. I'm Tony Gaston with the Hunt Companies. And, uh, last month, uh, one of the board members, that nice bicycling guy, Mr. Rogers, he's not here tonight, but I remember he wanted to know some feedback about Kalailoa and, um, what's happening. So I did a quick presentation just to show you guys everything. Um, if you remember, last month I talked about how Kalailoa was thirty-eight hundred acres. It's old Barbers Point Naval Air Station. So on this map here, look at how many different colors there are. That shows how many different landowners are actually in Kalailoa. They're all over the place. So how much is Hunt involved with all the thirty-eight hundred acres? Well, Hunt is involved with about fourteen percent, only five hundred fifty of it. Now granted, the five hundred fifty is in the core area. So what I did is I made everything black and white and highlighted the areas that Hunt is involved with. And this is like the downtown area of Kalailoa. So because we are in the downtown area, we are linked to a lot of the roadways. But one thing that everybody needs to understand is although we are linked to it, we are not the sole reason for, for the roadways to get to that size. It's based on thirty-eight hundred acres overall. And we are working a lot with HCDAs on that. So Board Member Rogers did ask a question about FDR, and I did want to share how FDR is currently being constructed. You guys know, right now, um, it's being constructed with, um, two new lanes in two directions. And it's because back in twenty sixteen, some entities came up with this MOU, a memorandum of understanding. So it was HCDAs, DOT, and three different, um, city and county agencies. Hunt wasn't involved at all. They came up with this rule that, um, this portion of FDR, see, I put that red highlight, just that segment right there, gets built to a certain standard. And this is a standard that is agreed upon, that all the agencies will accept and the city and county will maintain in the future. Now going forward, we've been working with HCDAs and already talking with the city and county because we want to take the rest of the roadways and make them, gosh, a little more multi-use. We're trying to put in some bike paths. We're trying to make them more pedestrian friendly. But again, that's something that needs to be done with an overall roadway master plan. And we actually started that process a couple of months ago with HCDAs. So, yes, we are trying, but in this portion right here that's highlighted, we're not gonna be able to do very much because of the MOU. So that was the quick roadway overview that was requested. Does anybody have any questions?
John Clark.
Thank you, Tony. Appreciate it. Uh, HCDAs, what's an acronym stand for again?
Oh, that's the Hawaii Community Development Authority. So they are a government entity. They are the ones who are in charge of the entire master plan.
Okay, um, so this, I'm gonna ask about this again. Is it, is it too late to expand the sidewalks in that area?
We, we. Yeah, so that's why, see, there's that MOU.
Right.
That was done in twenty sixteen that specifies it's this, 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 this. So two sidewalks, a big planter strip in the center, and two travel lanes for vehicles in each direction.
And the width of the sidewalk?
Six feet.
Six feet.
Yeah.
Notwithstanding the big two feet.
Every once in a while, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to put in some streetlights. I know.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other question for the board? Any question for the community? Well, Tara, you got something? Go ahead.
Oh, yes, I do. And so Tara Rojas, uh, I'm gonna read something right here. It says Wednesday, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Hunt Corp of Texas illegally destroyed historic and cultural sites for years in Kalailoa, Kanahili. Hunt Corp of Texas Development by illegal demolition tactics approved by Navy NAVFAC. This is by Kanahili Cultural Hui, and it says right here, this is all approved by Navy NAVFAC Real Estate Group and HCDAs, which we are in, uh, having issues with right now, because HCDAs, like I said before, the development, and they're just gonna push it through regarding, uh, paperwork that have been put in by cultural practitioners with the necessary information that should have stopped the rail for one, as well as all of this building, including this Kalailoa master plan, which is literally, it states, a fifteen to twenty-minute smart city. So, uh, Hunt Corp intentionally damaged and destroyed many Eva Field historic and cultural sites and state-of-the-art land within HCDAs, Kalailoa, without required review and consultation. So the fact that, you know, they're just always so happy and look at what else we're gonna build, that is the fact right there. It's documented. And you can just go to honouliuli.blogspot.com and, and see this information. So, uh, they destroyed important ancient Eva landmarks, which is on Navy-owned property and therefore a violation of the ARPA, Archaeological Resources Protection Act of nineteen seventy-nine. The plan was to build a massive asset car parking lot. So I'm just gonna say this, that all the development and the developers in this area, they do not, they did things, you know, uh, illegally. They do not have true title to these lands. And the effects are gonna be felt by the community. Mahalo.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for the update. Okay, Gentry Holmes, update? Hey, Debbie.
Thank you. I know it's been a while since, um, I presented an update on, um, our project. Uh, I did want to update you on our, um, the agreement that we're trying to work out with DOE and giving them the five acre parcel of land next to Holomulus School. We're still working on it. We're very close to, uh, finalizing the right-of-entry agreement so that they can utilize the property. I know the principal is very eager to use that site for their upcoming spring program. And so hopefully, um, it'll get signed soon and that, uh, we'll be able to proceed with, um, developing the parking lot for them and, you know, getting some credits in exchange for it. That's my update. Any questions?
Any question for the board? Any question for the community? Okay, Tara, I see your hand up. Oh, somebody else?
Yes, I have a question. So for Gentry.
Go ahead, Tara. Uh, Representative, go ahead.
Okay, yes, Tara Rojas, and this can, you probably come up with the BOW, uh, section. But, so Gentry, what is happening and what are you all gonna do with the fact that you all have one meter for your whole community and the fact that when a leak happens, it's using our precious water that for five or six years, fifteen to twenty million gallons have been leaking per month that has not been found? And what has been done? And how is this gonna be resolved in addition to, you know, any future developments or, uh, areas? So what is being done as far as that, that leak? Mahalo.
Well, I, I understand that the Community Association is working on it. It is, um, a rather old project, um, past the ten-year statute of repos. And so during that time period, we did try to work with the Community Association in identifying where the leak is. At, at that time, it was, um, one water meter and.
My follow-up question is that's been going on for five to six years and it's costing the, the owners about in the millions of dollars divided among the number of residents, so.
Yeah, that's not, not, Tara, sorry, that's nothing to do with Gentry. They turned it over and their, I think their agreement lasted up to ten years on their warranty and stuff like that. So it's nothing to do with Gentry. Um, I was, I was prior to the president of the association. We're still dealing with the same issue for the last five years. Uh, we've been hiring multiple contractors, millions of dollars going on. Uh, we're on a separate well from the border water supply, so, um, that's still an issue with us as well. But yeah, you're right, we still haven't found the leaks. We've, we've went through, I think, three, four, or five different leak detection companies. We're still with the contractor, said it was gonna take about eight months to, I mean, eight months due to project, he's been there for another two and a half, three years already, so it is an issue. But thank you for that.
Okay, Representative Alcos, go ahead.
Hi, thank you, Mitch. Hi, Debbie. I'm, I'm Lucy. I just came out from the bathroom, but did you talk about the Geiger Road and Kamakana?
Traffic signal, yeah, there.
So, um, the community wanted a traffic light there. The last we talked was a few months ago that, um, you was putting in a traffic light there. Could we have an update on that right now?
Yeah, I should have, uh, checked on it before I came to this meeting, but, uh, I understand it's still in the process. It, it is a long and arduous process to get a traffic signal installed because each traffic signal has to be custom designed and made on the mainland and then shipped back to us. So we are working on it. Gentry will put it and install it.
There was a few, uh, people died in that area. And it's in very, um, dangerous area to get out from. Is there a way that the community or somewhere that we can speed things up? Because, um, it's been at least a year. And, um, I understand that, you know, it takes time, but it's a traffic light. I keep on telling the community that, you know, we're working on it. We got this information. So how can we speed things up to make it more of an emergency thing? Like if something happened in Maui and we want to help it out because we want to save lives? Same thing at this situation. We don't want to deal with it as a development and takes time and we're gonna do it. We want to make sure that it's a emergency and how we can come together to support you.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure. We can perhaps talk to DTS, the Department of Transportation Services, to see if, perhaps, um, in the interim, there could be stop signs or, you know, three-way stop or something. I'm not sure.
Let's talk about it, you know, I can. Thank you.
With that.
Stop sign, stop sign is not gonna work. Yeah.
Or maybe rumble strips? Yeah, until the traffic light is done.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions. Thank you, Debbie. Okay, moving on to Haseko, anybody on?
Hi, Chair. I'm here. I actually don't have an update for you guys, though. So nothing new this time.
All right, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Here, Horton, oh, 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 sorry. Sorry, you got a question over here, Lisa?
Yes, uh, Lisa, I'm just following up from a previous meeting. I was asking about whether, uh, Haseko had done an environmental protection, environmental impact statement for the Royal Cunha Two subdivision, especially looking at the impact of dioxin. Can you say you get back to me on this?
Hi, actually, I wasn't there at the meeting at that time. I'm sorry, but I know that we did have, as we all know, Royal Cunha was an ag area and it had sugar. Um, so there is a spot that has environmental, but it is further away from the homes itself. And we are working with Department of Health to ensure that that gets cleared up because our previous reports before we purchased the property. because our previous reports before we purchased the property showed that it had been cleared, but we did some additional testing ourselves just to make sure. So. And I believe all the reports are filed with Department of Health.
Any other questions? Tara, you got something? Go ahead.
Yes, I do. Tara Rojas, I'm gonna say this again for Haseko, that, you know, we cannot be happy in a water crisis about a bouncy house, inflatable obstacle course, and any of the new things that you're gonna come up with, you know, you gotta, we gotta have first clean water. And I'm gonna just put on the record that, again, from the honouliuli dot blogspot dot com, y'all should read it. Car limestone in the Eva Plains has hundreds of springs, caves, and holes. Developers destroy them. Honouliuli Eva Limo was the house of Limo because of Eva Plain car system. Haseko systematically wiped out native Hawaiian culture sites linked to the Onitulachao. Now, the HCDH master plan for Kalailoa wants to wipe out remaining ancient Kanahili sites for condominiums. So just everybody to keep this in mind, that how is this possible to keep going? We need to stop this now. Mahalo.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions? Thank you, Lisa. Okay, moving on to Dr. Horton, Ho'opili update? Tracy?
Good evening. My name is Tracy Tonaki, and I'm with Dr. Horton Hawaii. Uh, thank you, Chair, and the board members for allowing me a little bit of time just to give a really brief update of Ho'opili, uh, and what we're currently working on. Uh, we always start, uh, any kind of presentation with a slide of the collage of our home buyers, uh, and residents who live at Ho'opili. They're Hawaiians families, working families, HPD, construction, nurses, uh, young families, retirees, multigens, uh, generational families that live there, happiest day, uh, when they get their keys to their new home. Uh, so Ho'opili highlights, uh, really broad. Uh, Ho'opili is about fifteen hundred and fifty acres of land. It is, uh, has been, uh, zoned for eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty residential units at full buildout. Several million square feet of commercial space, uh, about a hundred fifty-nine acres of, uh, land will remain in permanent agriculture and is being actively farmed today. Uh, will be, we have been and will continue to, uh, install urban and community gardens. In Ho'opili, we have a IMX subdivision. Uh, we have the Hart Rail Line running through our project uh, with, uh, three rail stations either on or just off of Ho'opili. Um, five, uh, DOE school sites, uh, a total of ninety-four acres will be dedicated and deeded over to the Department of Education. Three elementary schools, a middle school, and a high school site. Um, three city and county district parks for a total of forty-five acres of land will be, uh, deeded over to the city and county. Uh, we'll have a bunch of private parks, uh, throughout Ho'opili. Five and a half acres of land was donated to the Hawaiian Humane Society. West Oahu Campus on Fort Weaver Road. It's a beautiful campus. If you've ever, uh, haven't been there, please, please visit it. And they have a lot of animals that need homes. Uh, an acre, about an acre of land will be deeded over, donated to Yani Coast Comprehensive Center within Ho'opili to hopefully build a clinic. Uh, thirty percent of our homes will be, uh, city and county affordable. And, uh, currently, we have both affordable rentals as well as affordable for sale and, uh, workforce housing, uh, within Ho'opili. Uh, completed to date, uh, we have about a little over twenty-seven hundred families that call Ho'opili home today. Uh, we've built out, uh, about nine of our development parcels. That's what's grayed out on the map. Uh, what we're currently working on in active site construction is, um, if you look on the lower right-hand corner, there's a triangular piece that's colored yellow. Uh, that's actually, uh, the Ho'opili's permanent drainage basin. Uh, that's, uh, just finished up grading, grading work and digging out our basin. Uh, we'll be hopefully starting the channel work that will, uh, bring water from all of Ho'opili down into that basin. That's part of our permanent drainage plan that was approved, uh, for Ho'opili. And then up on the other corner, uh, where you see the upper-left corner, where you see the big blue, uh, parcel, colored parcel, that's actually the, uh, high school site, uh, that the DOE will hopefully build a high school in the future. And so we're actively grading that area just off of, uh, just below H1, uh, freeway, uh, so that we could prepare that site for the DOE. They asked us to have it ready for them, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. And last slide, if I may, Chair, we just have some community events coming up. March twenty-second, we have our Festival Street, uh, event open to the public, uh, in the evening, where we have vendors and, and food trucks and sometimes entertainment. So this will be the Easter event. Uh, on March twenty-eighth, uh, we're gonna be having a sign-waving event. We're supporting, uh, Jonah, uh, Fuentes, who's a senior at Kapolei High School. He's organizing a, uh, sign-waving campaign with MAD, Mothers Against Junk Drivers. And, uh, we'll be supporting and sponsoring his event on, uh, March twenty-eighth from four to six P.M. And then on May third, we are gonna have our quarterly, uh, Ho'opili, uh, blood drive. So we've been doing a, a partnership with the Blood Bank for, going on three years now. Every quarter, we have a blood drive for the community. It's, all of these events are open to the public. So please come and donate, uh, uh, to save a life. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the board? Corey, go ahead.
For, uh, Ho'opili High School. So right now, the grading is being done by, uh, Dr. Horton, Dr. Horton and not the DOE right now?
Correct. We're, we're, we're doing the, just the mass grading of the site. And then we'll deed that over to the DOE when they're ready to, uh, plan and design the high school site. They are, I will say, uh, we got a recent, uh, update from the DOE that they're actually gonna be starting the planning and design work of the first elementary school site in Ho'opili.
Is that the elementary school by, like, the soccer field? Is that the one?
The, yeah.
So they have, they, they, uh, got the CIP funding, funding for that?
I'm not, I can't comment on their funding. Uh, all I know is that their consultants and the DOE reached out to us and they wanted to start, uh, start their surveying work. Yeah.
Okay. But they having, I'm sorry, if I can just follow up. Has the DOE given you any timeline for when they're gonna be building, uh, East Kapolei High School?
I haven't gotten an updated timeline, uh, recently. Uh, uh, we were just, uh, getting ready, getting the, the land ready so that it is available for them when they're ready to start the planning and design work.
Thank you. So we got, we got three elementaries, one intermediate that's built already, and the high school coming up.
Yes, so the one intermediate that's built, Honouliuli Middle School, is actually out, just outside of Ho'opili by the Crop Center. So there's another middle school site in Ho'opili, but I suspect that won't be built for a while since they already have the new one.
Thank you. Any other questions for the board? Any questions for the community? Okay, please step up to the mic, your, your name and your question, and we'll go online to Tara. Go ahead.
Hi, Susan Gorman Chang. Um, I saw on the map there's a big community park that's gonna be built. Do you know when that's gonna start?
Are you referring to the city and county parks?
Yes.
One of the three. So as we start, as we develop, uh, we'll be able to carve that out and mass grade it and then deed it over to the city and county parks of recreation. The big one, I think, that you might be referring to in the middle, we haven't gotten to that portion yet. The first one that we're going to be making available to the city and county parks of recreation is up in that Phase One near the high school site.
Right, okay. And then also, um, how do HOAs work there? Is, you know, as far as when do the boards get together and people get elected?
So the Ho'opili Master, uh, HOA is called the Ho'opili Community Association. And that's every, every resident of Ho'opili is a member of that. And then the individual condominiums or multifamily, uh, projects have their own, uh, AOUO, uh, on top of that that manages their individual condo.
Right, so what about single-family residents?
So the, single-family residences are part of the master, uh, HOA.
Okay, but those are not elected positions? Those are the management company?
The management company, yes. And, uh, Dr. Horton is the declarant at this point in time?
At this point in time? When does that change?
Uh, not until a little further down the line as we get through the development of Ho'opili.
Okay, thank you. Tara, go ahead.
Aloha, Tara Rojas. So upset. This is the most fertile ag land in all of Oahu. And I'm gonna read again from honouliuli blogspot dot com, blogspot dot com. January twen- June twenty-eighth, twenty fifteen, West Oahu residents speak out at important ag lands and Ho'opili station meetings. Residents are angry and upset that developers get everything they want while local politicians and city government do not listen to the community. The political system has become very corrupted. The Kapolei Makakilo Neighborhood Board passed resolutions opposing the Ho'opili project and the Hart Rail project. Rail and Ho'opili are not popular in West Oahu. Despite developers buying the city council votes, they want the average person really understands that rail has become a super expensive, out-of-control land development scheme using state and federal tax dollars. Ho'opili will involve, uh, picking up the Ivi Kupuna of Kaloi and Honouliuli coches where Kanakamoli farm Lo'i Taro bananas, sweet potato for hundreds of years. Ho'opili is a fake name, and the farmland was stolen by a fraudulent FTA Farmland Policies Act Section 4F document. The Ho'opili Station Meeting, Kapolei, like the important agriculture lands beneath Kapolei, were taken over by community members angry at the fraudulent IAL process used by the city DPP consultants to justify passing Bill Three. The Ho'opili Station Meeting was stopped when the Ho'opili Culture Pavilion, uh, slide came up. So again, this was important agriculture lands that you are, that you desecrated, that the community did not want, and even the Kapolei Makakilo Neighborhood Board passed resolutions. And this is the result of this, these kind of developments and this corruption in this state that if people don't see, until our water is affected, until our land is gone, until our ocean is affected, will people learn?
Thank you, Tara. Thank you very much. Okay, Corey, go ahead.
Uh, I just wanted to get an update on the, um, the power lines. I know the members of the community have expressed that they wanted underground power lines, and they have that. Is there any update?
Yeah, we're still undergoing, unfortunately, litigation on that, so I can't really comment, uh, on, on the power line situation.
Okay. Seeing no other questions? Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on. We're going to government, government officials. We're gonna go to US Marine Corps Base Hawaii?
Good evening, Chair, Board, members of the community. Uh, first want to thank you for your time and allowing Gunner Simpson, uh, time on the agenda to give a presentation. There's other topics, uh, Marine Corps by, Marine Corps Base Hawaii interests that you would like to hear about. Let me know. I'll get them organized and we'll get on the agenda, uh, for future meetings. The big announcement tonight is we have the results from the sampling, and that was conducted mid-February. And so when I say we have the results, we have the raw data from the lab. Uh, still gonna take some time to analyze, assess, uh, and characterize that data, get it into a report, and then share it with you and the community. Uh, I briefly mentioned the, the Waterway Bulletin. That, that's the thing that's published weekly. I don't know if that would be helpful for the board to receive that on a weekly basis or, or we can give you the, the website, um, where to find it. Uh, and then pending any questions, that's what I've got tonight.
Any questions for the board? Alex, go ahead.
Hey, thanks, Major. Um, I just wanna clarify. So you're gonna actually be able to share the, the hard copy report or digital with the community, not just present? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Wait.
Uh, the, the questions I referenced earlier, um, we sent you ten questions, uh, related to, um, the gentleman's presentation, which again, I, I appreciate this dialogue. Wondering, um, if we can still anticipate responses to the questions you weren't able to get to today?
Yeah, so as I understand this, and please tell me if I, if I'm off here. Uh, these are the same questions that were submitted by you and Alex to rep case to answer. Or are they, are they in addition to that?
No, they're the same questions. And what, what their office has said, which is what's similar to what Colonel Bevan has said, is that there are some things that need to be answered at, at the local level here. There's certain things at, from Washington that they just, they're gonna ping it back down to you. They don't have that information. Um, and so we need to sort out which ones or which. Happy to sort that out with you. But just, just in terms of, you know, what you can answer.
Right.
Um, they, you know, I think, I think it speeds up the process because they're gonna come asking you for it anyway.
Sure, but there is a process, right? Uh, and so a couple of things on two of the questions, I think. The Marine Corps doesn't control aircraft into or out of Honolulu International Airport. Uh, so I would recommend that you address those questions to the FAA. Uh, secondly, I can't speak for the federal government. I can't speak for the Marine Corps on what decisions we make in official information. What I can do is give you the pre, the pre-decisional, the deliberation room, that kind of information. If that helps clarify kind of where we're at with the question and answer process.
Uh, sort of, but I wanna take more time on it. I'll keep talking offline. Second question was, um, regarding, uh, Request Freedom of Information Act. I know you've offered to help us, um, if we're looking for documentation with the local office. For example, um, we, we issued a Freedom of Information Act request to see if the FAA and the Marine Corps had any communication with each other. The FAA answered us. They said no, they didn't have any on record. Um, we sent one to you guys, but interestingly, it went through the Navy. And then it's a new process, then down to your local office, and it's been lost for three months. We wonder if you could help us?
Yeah, if you can share, share with me. I'll get it to our Marine Corps Base Hawaii office.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, moving on. Tara, you got something?
Aloha, Tara Rojas. I just wanted to say that we're two thousand twenty-four, two, and two twenty, two thousand twenty-nine. Just gonna keep reminding that five years leases are up. And so that's enough time to, you know, really, after you give the presentation of the results, uh, to, you know, just kind of clean out the area and, you know, prepare to transition to leave. Because I'm not the only one that worldwide, and even students especially, and, you know, just especially indigenous cultures, you know, we really are for demilitarization, and especially in Hawaii, given the desecration and contamination and destruction that has been caused. And the fact that, no, for national security, no, that's not enough, you know, and that's not, that is just not a valid excuse before. So if you can, you know, pass this up to the chain of command, that again, in five years, leases are, mahalo.
Yeah, Tara, thank you for the, for the comment. And I'll just share for everyone's awareness that Marine Corps Base Hawaii, um, land holdings on Oahu are not leased.
Okay, uh, Mike, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Major, uh, you mentioned that you don't control the aircraft. That's, that's clear and obvious. But you do have an obligation to keep aircraft out of your surface danger zone when you're firing. I know, uh, your regs do say you're supposed to establish a surface, uh, I mean, a special-use airspace. I'm aware of what went down in Guam when, when all of the procedures were, were walked through. And then the FAA came back and said, well, we don't, we're not gonna give you that. Okay. Well, you guys are firing while aircraft are in your surface danger zone with regularity. I mean, you can look in the chat. We've got a couple of links of video to that. Um, you say you call ceasefire. I, we witness it all the time that you don't. What is your method of determining whether or not a plane is approaching your surface danger zone? What are the criteria for actually calling a ceasefire that we rarely ever see?
I think the most basic answer is if any marine on the range witnesses an unsafe situation, they're authorized to call a ceasefire. Now, if you hear that at your property or not, I, I can't speak to that. Um, we don't control aircraft. Uh, we do not have any information from the FAA indicating that there is a threat to the aircraft that go into or out of Honolulu International Airport. So I would recommend that you direct those questions to them because I will not have an answer for you.
Okay, thank you, Julie.
The answer is you don't have a method of determining whether an aircraft is in or not in your surface danger zone.
Yeah, Julie, you got something? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm major. I'm not sure if I...
He didn't answer my question, Chair.
I'm not sure if I missed it, but when you talked about the data, was there any timeline for when, how long it would take to be analyzed?
Yeah, so, um, I can give a little context. So there was twenty-four hundred samples total. So I haven't seen the report, uh, from the lab. Uh, so I don't know how big, how many pages it is, um, but I would estimate rough, a couple of weeks to get, one, our analysis of it. We also have to share it with the Department of Health and our international partners to make sense. And really what we're after is getting it in a way that makes sense for, for everybody, not just scientists, not just, you know, not Marines, right? Uh, so for everybody, uh, we wanna make sure we get it right.
Okay. John, you got something? Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, thank you for your report, Major. Can you just reiterate the, uh, the consortium? If, uh, uh, of folks that are involved, that is not just the Marine Corps, but who, who are the other entities involved in reviewing the data?
Yeah, so as, as I understand it, so we've got Marine Corps Base Hawaii, the State Department of Health. We have two scientists, uh, one from the University of Hawaii and one from Brigham Young University Hawaii, who are out, uh, and observed the sampling. Um, I think that's about it.
And the lab?
And the lab, that, yes, the, the initial analysis was done by the lab, yeah. Can I clarify that? Um, because John, John Clark said that they were involved in the analysis.
Because John Clark said that they were involved in the analysis. That's not correct then. They were only observers of the sample collection. Is that correct?
So they, they came out, right, because when we formulated the SAP, they were involved in kind of the design of the SAP. Does it make scientific sense?
No, 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 no. They were not involved in the SAP, is my understanding. The SAP was finalized before that group of individuals was involved.
Okay, I might have to go back.
That's a big, that's a big, I'm surprised you say that considering that's the point we made to you on literally dozens of occasions that that SAP was developed before anyone else was involved. I feel like that's a purposeful slip, but even if it's not, I just want to clarify that all those individuals that you were just talking about are not involved in analysis of the results, correct? Just the lab is.
We, the lab analyzed the initial samples, right? Because Marine Corps Base Hawaii can't do that, right? It's why we contracted an on-island EPA certified lab. So they took all that soil and analyzed it with their tools and methods and all that. So we have all the numbers on a spreadsheet, right? So we have to make sense of that, map it out on the terrain of PRTF and make sense of all that.
So are all the individuals that John Clark just referenced going to be a part of that process? That's what you just stated.
I'll have to get back to you. Yeah.
Okay. Seeing no other questions? Thank you, Major. And thank you for coming. Thank you very much. Okay, I want to go back real quick, sorry, to, before we hit the Navy, back to residents, community concern, community announcement. I forgot announcement. Wanted to bring up something new and what came up last month with, I think Kurt brought it up for naming the softball field with Misari and stuff like that and got a good idea. So I put it out to all of our representatives, senators, even community members to, if you have a person in our community that does a lot, that does things above and beyond and want to be recognized in our community, this is one of the avenues that you can do that. So I would like, Camp High School has a monthly, I guess, they acknowledge faculties and also teachers of the month. So I wanted to bring up what, one of the, I guess, faculty and one of the teachers, staff. So faculty of the month is Douglas Hartman, teaches entrepreneurship. He will always go out of his way to greet, greet you and tell you to have a nice day, whatever it is or whatever it is to do, he gives some vote of confidence to help, help your day to go on smoothly. Everyone who knows him describes him as a genuine, genuine and funny. He'll make some joke or quip that makes, makes you laugh. He's a comic relief at academy meetings. This year, he helped a team to get to the, to get a credit union running on campus, Jim Campbell Campus. And he has, he has guided the students so they are able to run the credit union with just a little support. He engages in his students in class by sharing stories of fact and facts that help students put their learning into perspective. He is simply a positive force on our, for our good, for good on our campus. So staff of the month, Rena, if I kill her name, no, ask me, you know, my pitch is going to come out. Are you letting you guys know? So I think it's Rena Angelo Cookar. And I can make some jokes out of that, but I don't like, but she's the staff of the month. She's the special ed department. She's in the special ed department. Feels blessed to have a person who always goes above and beyond for students. This person truly loves and enjoys being around each other and everyone of her students. This is a clear, this is clear in all of the little things that she does, from putting on makeup for a girl to just tell stories or with a non-verbal child, whatever she, wherever she is, she is shown love to the most challenging students on our campus. On the metallurgical fragile or medically fragile students. She coordinates so many parts of the events, planning from planning the activities, securing the facility, filling out the field trip forms, giving the finalized form to the CIB teachers. And then, and then getting it back to in a timely manner, arranging for food and transportation, both sped the bus and regular bus or S P E D. And planning activities to keep the students engaged. She does it because she has a pure heart and true love for, for our special population. So those are the two faculty and also staff of the month for James Campbell. So if anybody else has, anyone else, please let any of the members of the board know and if you can address them in our residents, community concern and community announcements. Okay, thank you. No, going back, sorry. I killed something. US Navy, Navy, all right.
Aloha, Chair and Community. I sent the report earlier, our full, full-on report earlier to you, Chair. So I'll just hit the highlights so I can save some time here. As of March 6th, the Joint Task Force removed the rest of the residual fuel, 61, more than 61,000 gallons. At this point, their next steps are to complete their turnover with the Navy Closure Task Force. They'll have the official transfer of authority on 28 March during a ceremony then. The Navy has voluntarily extended its drinking water long-term monitoring program for another year. So they will be posting those results on the Safe Waters website that we've been able to present to you all over the past year. And the information booth, they had one last night at the Kapalina Night Market. The next one will be 28 March at the Hickam Main Exchange. And our community members who are still trying to understand how to read that long-term monitoring information, they can go to one of those information booths and ask questions. Also, an update to the, the removal of the octa coral that was, that is in the Pearl Harbor area at certain spots. The methods that they're using has been successful and they're still continuing with that. So with that, Chair, pending any questions, that's, that's what I have for this evening.
Any question for the board? Any question for the community? Tara, go ahead.
Yes, Tara Rojas, I did speak at the F-TAC meeting as well and issue and stated my concerns regarding the detection of sheen, you know, on non-Navy land. But what I wanted to go here is I did find the information, yes, the military. So again, leases are up in 2029. The marine, yes, does not have zero lease land, but they have 2,968 fee and 1,027 ceded and others nine, and so a total of 4,704 and which they're paying $1 for like the whole 65 years, you know, and so just to let you know that. And then as far as the Navy, they hold like 41,615 and Army holds 174,544. And why am I bringing this up? Because it says Kanaka Molly have a stake in these plans because they involve the fate of large tracts of Hawaiian trust lands, so ceded lands occupied by the US military. And so Kahao Laule was finally, you know, returned Hawaiian trust lands in the balance. And again, if the military released any of the trust lands, it would automatically revert to the state of Hawaii. And so, can you imagine, you know, just paying $1 for this full lease term? So again, 2029, as we're hearing, we need land that. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Susan, you got something? Go ahead.
Uh, yes. I, again, I would ask people to come to the Community Representation Initiative meeting on Thursday. We will be discussing something that the Navy, a Navy contractor presented regarding aspersions about the laboratory that you all used and the samples that you've been taking that you have posted on the long-term monitoring website. He was kind of, you know, questioning the lab results. So we will be discussing that thoroughly at the CRI meeting. And I guess my question is, what labs do you use for this water testing? And are, is the Navy's official position saying that those are in question now?
I'll have to find out for you.
Okay, yeah, again, I ask everybody to come to the CRI meeting where we'll have some very good questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other question? Thank you, Danny. Okay, moving on. US Army?
All right, good evening, everyone. Major Bonglo, United States Army Representative for tonight's meeting. Chair, members of the board and local community. I do, the Army did prepare a response for the question last month in regards to the synchronization between the Army and the FAA. So the Army's response is the United States Army conducts live fire wholly within the confines of FAA approved special use airspace. As it applies to live fire and aviation training within Schofield barracks, the Schofield barracks range control uses restricted areas. All non-participating aircraft are required to stay clear of that restricted airspace due to the existence of unusual, often invisible hazards to aircraft. There is also a restricted area of airspace located on Hawaii for the Puukalua Training Area. These restricted areas are published in the Federal Register and can be penetrated on an IFR clearance, meaning civilian aircraft must meet approved altitude reservations and have permission to operate in the airspace. Pending any questions, I'll move on to the monthly announcements. All right, so for the Army's Job Fair in March, the next one will be on March 19th at Mililani High School from 8:30 to 2:00 PM. There will be job offers and provisional hiring the day of the Job Fair in advance. Applicants may go to www.himwr.com. The next announcement is on, in March, the Army will continue training in East Range area with Ranger and Jungle Tactics, which includes small arms blank fire from March 4th through the 31st during the day only from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And aviation training on March 8th from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Additionally, on Schofield barracks, there will be artillery and mortar training from the 1st to the 23rd of March, day and night live fire, including late evening and early morning hours. There will also be aviation training, rappelling and extraction on the 22nd of March during the day only. Lastly, there will be some prescribed burns on Schofield barracks in April. During the month of April, the Army will be conducting prescribed burns from the April 15th through the 20th. Prescribed burning is one of the most effective tools in managing the spread of wildfires and enhances the protection of endangered plants and animals by reducing vegetative ground fuels that would otherwise be consumed by wildfire. The Army has received approval from the Hawaii State Department of Health's Clean Air Branch and has coordinated with the US Fish and Wildlife Service to ensure all state, federal and army requirements are met. Pending any questions, that's all I have for the Army.
Good to go?
Good.
Any questions for the board? Any question for the community? We have two. Mike, go ahead.
Hi, Major Bonglo. Appreciate the information on your special use airspace. We know you guys are doing the right thing over there. The question I think was posed was, do you activate it when you're using your small arms ranges?
So in terms of activating the airspace, I think it's, it's active regardless of whether or not the ranges are being used.
Actually, I think that's not accurate. Based on what it says on the, the VFR sectionals that show the active times, it's by nodum, my understanding is, so it's selectively active, not just constantly active and selectively active at different altitudes. So if you could clarify that, that'd be great. I understand you might not have that info now, but thanks for your time.
Thank you. Tara, go ahead. Tara?
Aloha, Kalomai. So Tara Rojas, I wanted to let you know that as you're hearing, you know, the issues, you know, with the marine, we hear the update like from the Navy and then you all know the Army, which actually hold the most amount of land, 174,000. Did you know how important it is to have a home? So I just wanted to ask you that before I continue. I just have one statement. Do you know how important it is to have a home?
I, I do, yes.
Okay, so Kyle Kaduhiro in Kawai Ola News, December 1st, 2021, he spoke about the US Indo-Pacific Command, their unveiling of a Hawaii Military Land Use Master Plan. And basically at the end it says, the military's top priority is to retain training lands and thus prevent the return of leased Hawaiian trust lands. And again, this is, you all hold 174,544, quote unquote, you know, ceded land, which was never ceded, you know, it was just taken. And so the total military land use in Hawaii is 221,981 acres.
Thank you, Tara.
So, mahalo.
Seeing no other questions? Thank you, Major.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Representative Ed Keis, US Representative Ed Keis. Is Nestor on? Okay, no. Moving on to Mayor's Rep, Cal.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board and members of the community. Kalau Puu, Mayor's Rep, Deputy Department of Parks and Recreation. And I swapped cards with my daughter and left my written report in there, so I'm reading off my phone. So please bear with me for tonight's report. So first, I invite you all to take a Mayor's Newsletter. It's, there's copies on the table. And there's some highlights in there, but I will not share at this time so we can move this along quickly. The bus, so there's been some modifications to bus service. So the modifications that impact Eva Beach is Route 41. So the morning school day only short trip from Kapole Transit Center to Kapole High School at 7:15 AM was discontinued. And then a 7:20 AM trip has been added for the Eva Beach to Kapole segment. I believe this all started on March 3rd. Okay, so I'm going to address community concerns from last month. So first concern was request by Member Gals about, for a presentation about R1 water from Board of Water Supply. So BWS will be doing a presentation, but they request some time to do some research and coordination with other entities involved. There are multiple entities, I think. Some of the members know that well, so they will come back in either April or May to do a formal presentation. Papepe Road sign concerns. So last month, the ask was if we could, you know, there's four out of seven signs that are no parking signs. If we could remove a couple. And a question was also asked about the minimum distance. The minimum distance between the curb and the sign, I think. So DTS's response, there are only two no parking anytime signs along the portion of Papepe Road where the landscape strip is on the backside of the sidewalk and they are spaced approximately 500 feet apart. It also appears that the city's right-of-way ends at the back of side, at the backs of the sidewalk in this area. As such, the no parking anytime signs will be retained. And the minimum lateral offset requirements from the edge of travel way that the DTS follows to keep vehicles from striking the signs or posts varies. National guidelines specify that there will be a two-foot clearance from the edge of the sign to the edge of the curb. However, consideration is given based on the width of the sidewalk. That's that response. Member Rogers suggests, I'm going to move on to the next one. Last month, John Rogers suggested the potential installation of traffic circles to help control traffic with the recent increase in accidents in the community. He also asked if these installation of circles could remedy these traffic concerns. So response from the Department of Transportation Services, traffic circles are one type of measure from the traffic calming toolbox. The use of traffic circles depends on the context, on the context of the area. Criteria for the application of traffic circles can be found at the Federal Highway Administration's website. DPR Westlock Shoreline Pathway, so Board Member John Rogers asked about the shoreline pathway, if it can be repaired and maintained as the conditions are deplorable. It's also part of the Leeward Bike Pathway, which is scheduled to be completed by the end of this year. He also requested information about the open gates near Sing Park and YPO Point access road that allow motor vehicular access to the pathway. Does the city own those gates and how are they controlling access by vehicles? So regarding the pathway, we are assessing the area for repairs needed to maintain a Westlock shoreline pathway. So let's give our maintenance staff some time to do that. As for the Sing, sorry, part. As for the Sing, sorry, park gate, this is controlled by the Fairways Association. D P R.'s access point is through the Board of Water Supply Pump Station located in the Fairways Complex. As for the Y P O. Point Access Road, we need some time to get back on that one. It is D P R., though, I believe. Okay. Eva Community Park dugout, so Rep. Alcos did raise this question. If the park plans to replace the dugout at Eva Community Park that was removed when a tree fell down in the park two years ago, or maybe a year ago. So the Eva Beach Community Park Baseball Field dugout was completely removed due to damage from an uprooted tree. So we're currently working with our Maintenance Support Services on trying to replace the dugout. However, this wouldn't be able, we wouldn't be able to start that until our next fiscal year. So the city's fiscal year is from July to June. But that's when our funds would re-up. Okay. There was a lot last month, apparently. Eva Parks Greenery, so Board Member Reyes commented on the current green conditions of the fields in Eva Parks, but asked if this was just because of the rain, and I think I shared definitely the rain definitely had a part to do with that. So greenery of the Eva Parks are a combination of the excessive rain, but also watering by the maintenance staff. So right now, our staff water Monday through Friday and spend twenty minutes at each station, each watering station, but they will increase as needed. Moving on, Sing and Eva Mahiko water availability. So Member Gals shared that Sing and Eva Mahiko Park receive their water from nearby ponds from the golf course. The parks are without water if the golf course doesn't open it for them. Are the parks able to have water diverted from a different source to ensure they have water? So yes, we're just confirming Sing receives its water from the Westlock Golf Course, Eva Mahiko from the Eva Villages Golf Course. And at this time, this is our best source of water for irrigation. But who knows what may come out of the presentation and discussion? I think that was the last one. I saw a flyer, assuming Kelson brought it, about whose water is sourced, you know, where they source R one water, who gets R one water in the community? The last announcement I have, and I apologize for reading this quickly. You know, but given some of the concerns here and some of the concerns I heard tonight, I want to say, so the mayor is restarting. He's doing his second round of town halls. He did a round of town halls. I can't even remember, was it, yeah, last year, twenty twenty three. So they're gonna start next week, and Kapole, Eva and Makakilo are up first. So next Thursday, Kapole High School, six thirty P M. So I would encourage you folks to come out, you know, I know there's some recurring concerns here. There will be representatives, either the director or deputy, from all of the departments, designing, construction, transportation services, facilities, maintenance, parks and recreation. We will all be out there. The mayor will be there, so it will be a good time. He devotes most of the time, if you hadn't been there last year. Majority of the time is devoted for community to come up, ask questions, and we're put on the spot. We gotta get up there and be able to answer, or there's definitely follow up that we do, so. Want to encourage you folks to come out.
Thank you. Any questions for the board? John, go.
Thank you for that very comprehensive report. I want to go back to the P P. Road, and I get that there's two parts of it. And it looks like the bottom line on the one for the no parking anytime signs is that they're gonna, they're gonna leave those signs. It says the signs will be retained.
Yeah.
Okay, the second part says the guidelines vary on how far from the roadway. And it ends by saying, "Consideration is given based on the width of the sidewalk."
Yeah.
So I'd like to, in concert, based upon the previous statement saying that the signs will be retained, that's good. Let's take that consideration given to the width of the sidewalk, because that's what all of this is about, right?
Yeah, moving it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I would like to, again, I don't want to say counter, but in partnership with the communication that's going back and forth, request that, given the narrow width of the sidewalk and the amount of traffic that traverses that area, can we move those signs that will be retained into the grassy area?
So I know that was, I know that's, that was the original request, and this, you know, kind of has been morphing, right? Depending on the responses you folks are getting.
Right.
I think coming out next week would be good.
Okay.
You know, you will be speaking to someone's, like, our representatives will be there, and I feel like it'll be more impactful if you bring these issues up with, you know, the people who can influence change in the room.
I'll do both.
Yeah, so it'll go into the report.
Okay.
Jeffrey does a great job of taking notes.
And I would definitely be there, but can you also take it back?
Yeah, 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 it'll, it'll, it's in the.
Thank you, Ken. Appreciate it.
No rock, no problem.
Alex, wait.
So can I just clarify that? So you said that, did I hear that you said that the land, I think what, John Clark, what the ideal situation is like to move that sign off to the dirt that's behind the sidewalk? But you said that that land behind the sidewalk is actually not the city's, that it's.
It's, yeah, so.
So that would require like it's M O. U. or something with the developer? Is it the developer's land? I just want to make sure I heard that right, and so does that throw another?
I can repeat it. So there are only two no parking anytime signs along the portion of P P. Road where the landscape strip is on the backside of the sidewalk, and they are spaced approximately five hundred feet apart. It also appears that the city's right of way ends at the back of sidewalk in this area. Now, I don't know, you guys know the area, so I'm assuming you know what's being.
So you're saying the five hundred feet is per sign or no parking sign?
It appears to be the sign based on this report.
There's still five hundred feet?
In other words, yeah, what they're saying is there's five hundred feet between the first sign and the second sign, so no matter what we say, they're gonna stay.
You can count.
That looks like fifty feet.
If that.
Exactly. Is it mandated that they have to have the signs there?
I don't know what triggered, you know, the signs, but I'm gonna give D T S. and D F M. a heads up that this may come up next week so that they can.
No, it will, because when they, when we first said this, they, okay, we're gonna move the sign.
And they, they did, right?
Four.
They did move it.
Six inches towards the road. I don't know how much crew would do that, you know what I mean? Like, they came out, you can see the patch. No, I mean, I mean, Cal, sorry, but and ain't no five hundred feet. I can show you the picture. I showed you the pictures how many times? These are like here, Kelson, right there. Next sign, next sign, and there's about five no parking signs.
Come with your printed pictures.
You know, it is funny, because, no, no, I know, but in the beginning, it's in the grass. The end is in the grass, but the middle is all on the sidewalk. So no, I don't know, it just don't make sense. But what we're so adamant about is it, we're worried about the kids
Yeah.
going to school, and if somebody comes down with a wheelchair or bike or whatever, what happens? They gotta step off onto P P. Road where oncoming traffic is coming, where it's a potential to get, guarantee somebody will get hit.
It happens, and it happens. I drive there all the time, and you see a kid, bike falls off, and he loses control, or someone, and a car stops, and there's very limited area where the car can swerve out of the way because there's oncoming traffic next. So it's, it's just a, it's something bad waiting to happen.
We're coming. Thank you. Any other question for the board? Any question for the community? Tara, go ahead.
Aloha, Kehau. This Tara Rojas. Just wanted to ask, you know, the Mayor's Town Hall, it's gonna be March twenty first at six thirty P M. Kapole High School, yes?
Yes.
Okay, because then the C R. I. is also Thursday, five to eight P M. at Olelo Studio. So I was just wondering, is there gonna be an online option?
For the town halls? No, I don't. I don't think, yeah, there, it's not, it's not hybrid, it's just in person.
Okay, yeah, because in the last year, when I was at the town hall in person, actually, I was online in the Eva Beach Neighborhood Board Meeting.
Oh.
Connected at the same time, yeah.
It's just in person. I believe that they record it, though, and it's made available later. I could be mistaken.
Okay, so no more, I just gotta go in person?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, mahalo.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, moving on. Thank you, Cal.
Hello.
Moving on to Councilmember District One, Councilmember Andrea Tupola.
Aloha, Chair, aloha, board members, community. My name is Mika, representing Councilmember Andrea Tupola, District One. I sent you folks over our newsletter, and we had a successful West Side Homeless Symposium last month. We had over two hundred people attend. And it was really great to strategize with the community on how to address homelessness in the West Side, so that's in the newsletter as well. We also had a Stop Human Trafficking Conference on Maui, Big Island, Anahu, that was very, very insightful, and I encourage you folks to to watch the video listed in the newsletter. I also attached our Resolution twenty four zero five zero, which would create a standalone department for ocean safety. So please feel free to testify on that measure. It is moving throughout the council, and it is assigned to Budget Committee. On that note, it is budget season for the city, so if you folks have any requests for appropriations for the Eva community, please let us know, and we can put in those amendments for you folks. I also sent you folks a draft of a letter for Bill fifty seven and fifty eight, and this is to help with game rooms and support H P. D. to enforce and shut them down. Councilmember is asking if the board would be willing to hear these measures next month and take a position on it and submit a formal letter of support to the council if you folks do vote in favor. And that's all I have. I'm open to any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the board? Any questions for the community? I see one. Tara, go ahead, Tara.
Aloha. It was great seeing Andrea at the Y and I, you know, Neighborhood Board Meeting. I did ask and, you know, invite her to appear at the Eva Beach one because the second proposed wave pool falls in the Kalailoa area, which is the, that falls under her district. And so I was just wondering, could you kind of just re-pass along the invitation for her to appear so that she can, you know, hear the concerns in person or in this meeting as well?
Uh, yes, I will. I apologize, she wasn't able to attend tonight. It was the Mayor's Day of the City, so she was going to that, but yes, I will.
Okay, mahalo.
Okay. Thank you, Representative for Councilmember Andrea Tupola. Moving on, Councilmember District Nine, Councilmember Augie Toba. Representative here, okay. Moving on to Board of Water Supply.
Good evening, Board. For February, I'd like to report one main break on February third, twenty twenty four, at ninety one eight six four Makulei Road, Eva Beach. For our general water announcements, the Board of Water Supply and participating city agencies are observing World Water Day on March twenty second. The theme this year is Water for Peace. This internationally recognized event encourages water users across the globe to make a difference by changing how we use, consume and manage water in our lives. During this observance, read inspirational stories and watch videos on the global water and sanitation crisis. Find out how climate change impacts our water and get conservation tips at www boardofwatersupply.com backslash World Water Day and via our social media channels. Participating city agencies include the Board of Water Supply, Department of Environmental Services and the Resilience Office. To address some questions from last meeting, I've provided the board, and also there's pamphlets of a list of all the R one water users that receive water from the Honouliuli Waste Water Treatment Plant. And that list includes Barbers Point Golf Course, City of Kapole, Coral Creek Golf Course, Eva Beach Golf Club, Eva Villages Golf Course, Hawaii Prince Golf Club, Kapole Golf Course, Westlock Golf Course, Eva Makai Middle School, Ocean Point District Park, Honouliuli Waste Water Treatment Plant and State Department of Transportation. As mentioned before, we are working to prepare a presentation on the R one water. So if we could be added to the agenda for a presentation in the May meeting, May, thank you. Two more questions from Resident Tara. Regarding the leaky private water system at Eva by Gentry, the Board of Water Supply has recently met with the Taraza Cordabella Las Brisas Tubarón T C L. T. staff about the ongoing leaks and offered leak detection advice. We have yet to hear back from them. The B W S. takes water waste seriously. As it is vital, each one of us does our part to protect this limited resource by making every drop count. Please note that we will continue to use all available options to ensure the property management of T C L. T. repairs the ongoing leaks in their private water system. Another question, last meeting from Resident Tara Rojas, concerning concerns over overuse or misuse of water in Eva, as well as a question on, is there enough water for Eva now and into the future, especially with all the development and water usage? As there is currently no building moratorium in the Eva area, water allocation for new development is administered through the normal building permit application process. This falls under the purview of the Department of Planning and Permitting, not the Board of Water Supply. Please note that water conservation measures are required for all proposed developments. This includes deutilization of non-podable water for irrigation, R one, known as recycled water, using rain catchment, planting drought tolerant plants and using xeriscate landscaping, efficient irrigation systems, i.e. drip systems and moisture sensors, and water scents labeled ultra-low flow water fixtures and toilets. Additionally, the Board of Water Supply has several new source projects in Eva, including groundwater pumping stations, a new seawater desalination project for Campbell Industrial Park. Thank you. Is there any questions?
Okay, Alex and then John Clark, go ahead.
Hey, thanks for that, Kelson. Appreciate it. I just want to clarify, so you know, for the R one, that whole issue arose because specifically the problems at the parks, right? So Sing and Eva Mahiko in particular, they get their R one water through the golf courses, so. And that list that you provided, I just want to ensure that when you give that presentation, that's really a big part of why we're interested, right? So we understand when those parks don't get their water, the more mechanisms behind that, why that's happening, how, who makes those decisions, all that kind of thing, right? So just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, just a quick reminder for myself and the community. When you talk about R one, can you, I know it's recycled water, but could you talk about from where it's recycled?
Sure thing, yes. Our R one recycled water is recycled wastewater that comes from the Honouliuli Waste Water Treatment Plant. So we'll take that wastewater, and it goes through a filtration process, sometimes even a reverse osmotic process that will clean it to a point where it's usable for irrigation. It still has a lot of other contaminants in it, so that's why we're always cautioning people not to be in the parks when they're using this R one water sprinkling, because it's not clean, you cannot drink it. But it's perfectly fine, it's, it's great. We encourage it for all kinds of irrigation instead of using clean potable water.
Thank you.
Hey, any questions for the community? Okay, Tara, go ahead.
Mahalo, morning for the update, Tara Rojas. So that's an issue, right? Because like, there's no moratorium, so it depends on the department planning and permitting. And if we know that there's corruption happening there, that, that's, again, we're gonna just feel the effects until there's overdevelopment. And so I just want to put down the record, and so I wanted to ask you, though, about that water main break that you said at nine one eight six four Makulei Road. Isn't that the same area where the sewer spill happened, February fourth, twenty twenty three? And then a week later, in that, on that same road, there was a water main break? So I just tried to put up like eight one four that popped up in the map, and then nine one eight one four, which is also popped up. So is that the same area that it still keeps breaking? And what does that mean for the street and the residents in that area and for Eva Beach as a whole?
Sorry, I don't have the answer to that right now. Sorry, I don't have the answer to that right now. I'll get back and answer that question in the next meeting. Thank you, Tara.
Okay.
Thank you, Kelson. Okay, moving on to Department of Education, DOE. Audrey.
Good afternoon, good evening, Chair and committee members. Um, be respectful of the three minutes. I'll try to talk real fast. Um, Audrey Hidano, interim Assistant Superintendent for the DOE. Uh, we were asked to appear here at the Board at the request of Senator Aquino's office to talk about, um, some funds that were lapsed. Um, it's on our list, and depending on how the Senate and the House do their massaging, and we don't know the end result until after the session. But specifically for the ones that we had listed to be lapsed, um, there's two areas, one, the Campbell Complex and the Kapule. I'll do the Campbell. There's three of them. One is, um, Campbell High School. Um, we, it's in construction right now. We plan to finish, but, um, we're gonna be returning about four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars because we have enough money for that job. That would be the track field and other improvements. Another one is Eva Elementary School, the repair maintenance. Um, it's in construction right now, and, uh, we will be returning about seventy-five thousand because we have enough for that job. The last one on this complex is Raucunia Elementary School. It's a concept for a new school. We're returning, um, almost two hundred thousand because this particular project and task goes to the SFA, the new, um, School Facility Authority. So they will be building new schools. In the Kapule complex area, there are two schools that we put on the last lapse list. One is the Barbas Point Elementary School. That has to do with the restrooms to service the cafeteria. Um, we will finish the design. I don't know when, but we will finish it. Um, but we, we don't have enough for the construction of the project. The last one in that area is this East Kapule High School. Gotta get your attention. Um, there's plans for a new East Kapule High School. We will be returning about half a million, um, because we are in design only. And although it's not on the lapse list, it is not, but you had asked, uh, about the East Kapule Elementary School. So we're doing the design, um, and we will finish that. It's in design right now, um, but we don't have enough for the construction.
Hey, thank you. Any questions for the board? Okay, we got John, then we got Julie, then we got Cory. Okay, go.
Thank you for appearing tonight. Uh, we greatly appreciate any time we have a senior member of the DOE here. Uh, it means quite a bit to us.
All right, sir, I'm senior only in age.
So I joined the board in twenty fifteen, uh, January, and, uh, February twenty fifteen, we started pushing to get air conditioning here in the schools, and that took some time, uh, but, but we got it. Uh, the elementary schools, James Campbell High School. Uh, when you say returning four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, what, what do you mean returning? That, you mean that those funds are no longer available to complete the projects at the high school?
Well, returning meaning that, um, how the legislative, um, system works, um, it's, uh, what we call a line item. So each line item has a significant number of monies, and we can't like shift it around or use it for another school, another project, or another, um, design. So in a couple of the, um, projects that I mentioned, um, that we had enough. So that's what we'll, we'll be returning to, to government, to the general fund.
Right. So I just want to make sure that the community understands this, okay?
That's why I'm here. I've tried to explain.
Right. But I want to make it sure that it, it's in layman's terms. So for the funds that were allocated for capital improvement projects at James Campbell High School, of which there were several million, uh, four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars will not be spent at James Campbell High School on those efforts, some of which included the Title IX, uh, responses, correct?
Ti- Title IX and ADA will be on the top of our list. We'll try to take care of that first.
I, 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 I understand. But what I'm talking about, the four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars will not be used. It will be returned to the legislature.
Because we have sufficient funds for that project, for that school.
Okay, so those funds will be completed.
Gotta move on.
Okay.
Okay, Julie, go ahead.
So I, I think it was kind of, he kind of answered the question. Hi, I'm Julie. Um, so when you said you had sufficient funds, do you mean that you guys came in under budget, and so therefore you're returning it because it cost less?
We, we have enough, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Cory, go ahead.
I'm sorry, can I, it's, we, they became underbid, not under budget, but underbid.
Let me ask the quick question first that I asked before. So is there funding for East Kapule High School?
Second before, East Kapule High.
I'm sorry, is there, I know there's funding. Is there a timeline to construct it?
No, because we're only gonna do design.
Okay. So all the two hundred million dollars that was allocated?
Um, we're gonna lapse five hundred thousand.
No, no, how about the two hundred million? That was appropriated, I think, two thousand twenty-two.
Uh, that, I believe, would be East Kapule Elementary for, um, four million? No.
Okay, I'll, I'll.
I'll have to get back to you on that. The two million for, um, East Kapule High School. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And what year was that? I'm sorry?
I'll have to go back. I think it was two thousand twenty-two.
Let me get back to you on that.
Two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. I have to go back and look. But the bigger question I want to ask you right now is this, and this one absolutely blows my mind, that right now, the DOE, under the current budget, is looking at a two to three hundred million dollar cut. And it seems like that is not being discussed at all about how it's going to be actually dealt with at the school level. And so I just want to ask you, are the complex area superintendents or the leadership of the DOE taking seriously the potential budget cuts that's in the current budget for the DOE this year?
Yes, everybody is, yes.
And has there been any implementation discussions about what that means for next school year?
I'm sure others have thought about it or have a plan. I don't have the answer this evening.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other, wait, we have a question. Paraguay.
Aloha. So, uh, just to kind of piggyback on that comment, I just want to say that, but how interesting that in the legislator, their, uh, legislative session, that, you know, that what was brought up as of importance is like raising the cap for, you know, the BOE, you know, so, uh, talking about budget cuts for like the DOE, but yet for the, the superintendent, you know, having increased cap for his salary, and the fact that, you know, he brought on board a couple of, uh, people in the six-figure range. So you gotta, you know, think about like the, the priorities. I just wanted to make that comment. Mahalo. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions. Thank you, Audrey.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to Governor Green's rep. Eric, you on?
Uh, yes, yes, Chair. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, thank you, Board. I'll try and be quick, uh, out of respect for time. I just threw in a, uh, link to a newsletter. The newsletter distills a lot of the governor's updates, and I'll just share a couple of those. First, the governor's office is actively, um, opening Kahale across the island of Oahu. Uh, one Kahale is opened in downtown near Middle Street, and another Kahale is opened on the windward side of, uh, Oahu. Uh, right now, the governor's office is actively looking at available sites on the west side of Oahu. Our goal is to have twelve Kahale open throughout, um, throughout the state by the end of two thousand twenty-four. Uh, the other major update is, uh, the governor's office has been actively championing, uh, the, um, initiation of a, of, um, a new public housing, uh, development project out in town. That's gonna hopefully concentrate more affordable housing, especially within our public housing, um, uh, inventory, um, within, um, within our, within our urban corridor. Um, I'm, I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for the board? Any questions for the community? You know what, we're gonna, we're gonna move on. No questions. We're just gonna have the reports because we're already at ten o'clock. We're gonna start moving on. Sorry, Tara, uh, and anybody else here. We're gonna move on to Senate, uh, Senator Henry Aquino, moving on.
Hello, Chair, board members. Um, my name is Nathaniel Isay, and, um, I will be representing Senator Aquino this evening. I also sent, um, my report this afternoon. I'm not sure if you got it. Um, if you did, I will be standing by my report as well.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Senator Kurt Fivella.
Hello. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay. Aloha, Chair, members of the board and committee members. My name is Lovina Totofi, and I'm here on behalf of Senator Fivella. Thank you for allowing me to present virtually. Although Senator Fivella was not available to attend tonight's meeting, he does send his regards. In the chat, I have sent a link to his newsletter, and will just provide a, um, brief update. We have received CIP funds for Pohake Elementary School, twenty thousand dollars for the design and construction of parking and traffic improvements. And we would also, uh, like to thank Governor Green, as well as the stakeholders and Eva Beach Committee, Pohake faculty and students for, um, their support. We would also like to thank the Joint Task Force Red Hill for successfully defueling Red Hill, and understand that work is still underway in cleaning up the facility. Uh, Senator Fivella has also attended several events in the community, including Eva Elementary Schools' ADS Annual Legende Program and the Pool Range, excuse me, Pool Law Range Training Facility, um, along with other committee members. He also attended the Peepers of the Flag Ceremony and provided a community update on Olalo with Mr. John Druwa of Makana Okeakuwa. If you would like to receive any, um, communications or updates from Senator Fivella, you may contact his office at eight zero eight five eight six six three six zero, or email him at sanfivella at capital dot hawaii dot gov. Mahalo, Chair, members of the board and committee members.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Senator Mike Gabbert, our representative.
Hi, aloha, Chair, Mitch, Vice Chair, and honorable, honorable board and community members. I'm Nenuk Dennis, Senator Gabbert's community liaison. The senator sends his best wishes to you and your ohana and invites you to his March Listen Story Community Meeting. It will be Saturday, March thirtieth, from nine to ten AM at the Kapule High School Teachers Lounge. Uh, you can also join via Zoom, and you can email us for a link to the meeting, and I'll drop that in the chat. Our special guest speaker will be Erdi Lao, Manager and Chief Engineer of the Board of Water Supply. Last month, we welcomed Chelsea Arnett, Coordinator of the Hawaiian invasive Species Council. In addition to imported invasive species news and updates, Chelsea shared information on the little fire ant, koki frogs, and coconut rhinoceros beetle infestations on the west, on the west side and statewide, and what you can do about it. You can view her presentation on Senator Gabbert's YouTube channel. This session marks the senator's eighth year as Chair of the Agriculture and Environment Committee, and sixteenth year as a Chair of the Environment Committee. The AEN Committee holds hearings every Monday, Wednesday, Friday, from one PM to two thirty PM. They broadcast live and on demand on the Senate YouTube channel. For those of you following the legislative, legislative session, you know, you, uh, you know, we, we just wrapped up our mid-session bill crossover. That's when all the bills in their orig- originating chambers passed out of their respective communities, committees. Senate bills crossed over to the House and vice versa. I'll provide more details next month on which bills, uh, made it past the next deadline. Um, also, I'll drop in the chat Senators' February Newsletter, and feel free to reach out to sendgabbard at capital dot hawaii dot gov if you, if he can help you in any way. I'm happy to bring back any questions to the Senator. Mahalo.
Thank you. Um, moving on to Representative District Thirty-nine, Elijah Perick. Any representative? Seeing none, moving on to Representative Robert Martinez. Okay, moving on to Representative David Alcoz.
Thank you, Chair. Um, just a little quick update. I, I did wanna, uh, give a shout out to Agi Toba, Councilman, for the Nord Road cleanup that I was, um, gladly to be invited to assist him in cleaning up that road, um, along with Protectors of Hawaii Eight-O-Ai cleanup. Um, I know Cory was there, um, some other members that was, I mean, some other guys was out there that helping out with the church was also out there. And he was out there too. Um, just want to say thank you so much for that cleanup. I'm also putting in on resolution, uh, urging the golf course owner and the Navy and the city to figure out a way to get one sidewalk going out through that area. I know Agi was saying that, you know, they wanna, the city don't want to take out, take the land because, um, it costs too much money to put in the infrastructure. Maybe if the Navy takes, oh, build the infrastructure, build a sidewalk there, and then the city take it over. I, I'm not sure whichever way, but whichever way I want to put in a resolution to urge them to continue, um, building that sidewalk for safety for the kids to continue walking to and from school, even a street, a street light. But I maybe want a resolution from this, um, Neighborhood Board as well to urge the, um, these owners and guys to fix on it, or work on it. There's some bills that passed the House. Um, well, before I go on to bills, there was some finance that got passed on the CIP on the parking lot for Lima High School. There was some money that was, um, allocated over there. I'm not sure if it was about two million dollars for, um, design and a little bit construction. I got to double check on the numbers. There was also for Eva Beach Elementary, about four hundred something thousand dollars for a new facility. Barbas Point, as the, um, the lady was saying, you know, there's some money for Barbas Point that we pushed on for CIP money as well. Those are the schools in my district that we pushed on. I gotta follow up. Again, it's not passed yet because the, um, it's not closed, but it just kind of like passed the House and going over to the Senate side. Um, there's a bill that is concern, I said some concerning bills that went past the House. One bill is about marijuana, cannabis. Right now, if you got caught with, um, three joints, you know, you pay a hundred fifty-dollar fine. You change the bill now. If you get caught with, um, fifty-six joints on you, you're only gonna pay a twenty-five-dollar fine. Those are the kind of difference on the bills that you're trying to make it easier than, you know, arrest guys. Um, another one was menstrual product in men's bathroom. They want to put menstrual product in men's bathroom. Again, I never, I used bathroom all my life. I never did see any man that wants, and it's costing almost a million dollars to put menstrual product, and this is our tax money. If you guys want to vote against it, this is the time now to vote against it. You guys get one to two months to push against this bill. This bill already went past the House on it. Um, looking at, um, medical care, sexual transmitted disease, um, weapons, a, a little bit, couple more, um, dangerous weapons. Now, you know, you can carry, before they like, you cannot carry pocket knife or knock brass knuckles, you know, taking away your rights on protecting yourself or walking on someone in the dark from home. Um, but anyway, just check out my flyer. It's over there. There's some important bills out here. Take a look at it. And, um, other than that, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Now, you get a couple more. You see it from the beginning to the end. You get anything else you'd like add on?
No, thank you. Um, just go take a look at them. But thank you, guys, for putting out, you know, staying so long.
And coming early, leaving late, always.
Always good to listen to the community.
Thank you for coming and doing what you're doing in the community. Okay, moving on to Representative Diamond Garcia.
Hi, everyone. I am here on behalf of Representative Diamond Garcia as his legislative aide. I just passed out a flyer down to the board members. Um, so on the front, we have Reps' Community Hall Recap. Thank you to those that did come out and make it. We do really appreciate your support. Um, on the back, we have a little block that says how to testify. As Rep Alcoz mentioned, there are a lot of bad bills going through right now. So you can scan that QR code and see a video on how to testify against these bills. Um, also, we have reps, a few of reps introduced resolutions to help better the community. So if you guys have any questions or comments, I would be very happy to take them and make sure those get back to Rep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, this is good. You know, this QR code right there. You guys should have one for, have one modified, uh, like if you want to testify, one, this one already printed out. You scan and write any monument. See what I mean? You know, just simple, easy. Okay, you know what, I'm gonna move, uh, defer all the, uh, committee reports. Okay, we're moving on to an announcement that, uh, Okay, we're moving on to an announcement, uh, next regular meeting, uh, scheduled for Thursday for eleven, uh, seven o'clock, virtual webex and in person at Ever Beach Public Library. Regular board meetings are broadcast every first Sunday, six PM, every second and fourth Fridays at ten AM.
Before we adjourn, I just wanted to, uh, move to refer the proposal to host a candidate forum to the Public Safety Committee, uh, Community Outreach, Homeless Outreach Committee, uh, to, to make sure that that actually, you know, gets considered.
So you want to, okay, for the community forum, I mean, for the?
Yes, yes, for the candidate forum. Yes, sir.
Got it. Okay, other than that, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for staying, looking.
Aloha. Thank you for being.